Good afternoon. Welcome, everybody, to the February the 13th, nineteen, uh, two thousand and eighteen. I'm going back, ain't I?
Now, wait a minute, what time is it again?
Oh, never mind what it is. Well, again, I want to welcome everybody here. If you have any electronic devices, please silence them at this time. If you have to carry on a conversation with your neighbor, we'd ask that you take it out into the lobby, so it doesn't disrupt the rest of the meeting. I'm looking over the crowd, see if there's any elected officials out there. I don't see any right now, so what I want to do is go ahead and invite Reverend Amy Persons for the Point Washington United Methodist Church. Come forward, lead us in the invocation, and we'll do the pledge afterwards.
Let us pray. O Lord, our God, how majestic is your name in all the earth! When we look toward the night sky and see the stars, too many to count, we wonder about our place in the universe. And when the waves of the blue-green gulf lap over our feet, we pause and remember how little control we have over the sea, its movements, its creatures, its terrible and beautiful capabilities. But for you, Creator, these thoughts are nothing, for you hold the night sky in one hand and you balance the sea on your hip. Yet for all your power and glory, we are reminded of the words of Jesus who said that you have numbered every hair on our heads, and that you care even about the small sparrow. And so, good and gracious God, because you are above all things and because you are in the minute details of everything, we know that we can trust you and your wisdom. We can trust your spirit to lead us and guide us when we make decisions about apartment complexes, and sidewalks, and wiring for the sports park. We can trust your spirit to lead and guide us when we make decisions about resurfacing our roads, and the right wording for referendums. And when we reach the limits of our understanding, when we push up against the fixed abilities of our reasoning, we pray that your spirit break open new possibilities for paths forward, so that in all of our decisions, we may reflect the values of your kingdom in this world. We pray all of this in the name of the one who has accounted for every star and every sparrow. Amen.
Amen. Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. All right, let's see, no changes. Okay, I'm going to invite Ms. Teresa. You want me to butcher your last name or just... Okay, Ms. Teresa, if you'll come forward, I think you want to make a presentation. Please identify to the clerk.
Teresa Indick, I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Walton County. Just wanted to say a couple of things. With our county being ranked top in the state and the nation for growth, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you guys for your continued support of our Habitat program. We're proud to partner with the county, we're proud to partner with the HUD, the Walton County Housing Authority. I'm not sure if you're aware, but we've taken ten people off that program and turned them into Habitat homeowners. Every single one of those people are paying less as a Habitat homeowner than they were previously paying with HUD voucher assistance. I also wanted to take the time to thank you guys for allowing us to continue to be the replacement housing provider. We take unhealthy and unsafe structures and turn them into beautiful homes, beautifying our community, and also increasing property values. As you know, Habitat's a helping hand and not a handout, and we couldn't do it without your helping hands over the years, that allow not only our habitats to thrive and grow in our community, but also to give back to our community. So at this time, since our first Habitat home was built in 1997, our organization and our forty-six homeowners have paid property taxes, so we're here to present you with a check for what our Habitat homeowners and Habitat has paid into the county over the last nineteen years. So for $160,734.88.
Outstanding, outstanding.
And in addition, sorry, we are adding four new Habitat homes into that, or into the property tax. We've got two homes that are in Mr. Anderson's neighborhood. I want to invite all of you to come to our home dedication. It's March 2nd at 4:00 PM, where we will dedicate house number forty-seven and forty-eight. We also have two under construction in Commissioner Nippers' neighborhood, and I want to take this time, I know that she's not here, but to thank Commissioner Nippers for her efforts in affordable housing and fighting for workforce housing. We're extremely thankful for her support. So I just, once again, want to thank you guys so much. We couldn't do it without your support to allow this opportunity for our homeowners.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you.
I am, as in Mary, D as in David, I-E-K-E.
How do you say that?
Indick.
Indick, okay. Do you want us to take a photo?
Do you guys mind? Can we take a picture?
You got that. Yeah, I haven't got this.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I'm about to tell you there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Need a motion to the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, I've got ahead of the game, hang on. So there's no removals or additions or deletions?
That's correct, sir.
All right. This is the time for public comment concerning any topic that is listed on the agenda. In the event you cannot be here at the time the agenda item comes up, we'll also have public comment at that time for each item. So is there any public comment at this time concerning an agenda item? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes concerning the consent agenda?
So move? Yeah, second.
Got a motion in second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next one is Waste Management EAL. I'm making my announcement that I have a conflict of interest. I have filed the necessary form with the clerk and will abstain from the vote.
Motion's approved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The first item under administration for your consideration this evening is a request from Ms. Rhonda Skipper, Walton County Tax Collector, and her request is for you to approve a resolution authorizing her office, the Walton County Tax Collector, pursuant to Section 1K, Article 8 of the Florida State Constitution, and Section 197.332, Part N. 2 of the Florida statutes, to establish in the City of Freeport a branch office for conducting county business. This resolution simply states that you are granting and requesting Ms. Skipper to provide services in Freeport, primarily in the government center that has been purchased and that we're currently programming space for. Just doesn't specifically name how much space, what that space does, what services are offered, but absent this resolution, she's precluded by statute and constitution from expanding her office to that location.
Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Brian, did you or Patty want to make any statements concerning this, or you just here to observe?
I'm just here to observe.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The next item is regarding a request from our administrative staff on direction of the First National Bank Building and the Record Storage Facility. As you recall, some time back, we declared the old bank building downtown in surplus. We took sealed bids on it. The highest of those bids was $180,000. Also, if you recall, we had an appraisal done on that property and appraised at $230,000 with the idea of returning that building back to the private sector in downtown Defeniac so that it could be utilized for those things that are going on in downtown, but also to allow us to utilize the proceeds from that sale to construct a record retention facility that would probably better suit our needs as opposed to retrofitting something to construct something for that purpose. We put out for bids a request for proposals or bids on a building to accommodate the record restored facility, however, we got no responses to it. I can tell you, earlier on, we had a couple of contractors give us some line item estimates of what a new building would cost, and it's in the neighborhood of $200,000. But until we get some more specific plans and details and put ourselves in a position to hire a contractor to build a building based on the plans that we would provide them, it doesn't look like we're going to get a response to a bid. So our request today is for direction as to whether we want to continue this process, we want to abandon the process, we want to sell the building with some provision to utilize it for a period of time. I did talk to the proposed buyer, and he's more than willing to do a leaseback if we do indeed move forward with the sale during the time that we would either construct a building or find a more suitable location.
Okay, as I understand it, Mr. Jones, we got no response from the invitation to bid concerning the construction of the new one. Was there some indication that due to the fact that county's policy is that they must be able, the contractor must be able to do fifty-one percent of the work and not use suburbs for the entire thing? And if that's the case, you know, that may be limiting a lot of these general contractors that may need, they sub out a lot of their work, plumbing, electrical, whatever. So you know if that had any play in it or not?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether it did or not. It certainly could have. During the same timeframe, we did hear from a contractor that was, had that concern on various projects, that as a contractor, they don't have a crew. They don't nail nails and saw boards. They hire subcontractors to do that, and with a provision that requires at least fifty percent of the work to be done by the primary bit holder, they're precluded from bidding on those processes. And some discussion, and I believe had this discussion with the chairman, that the one way to address that may simply be that on a project that requires a building permit, to waive that provision. A, a general contractor's going to pull that permit, so it's going, the whole project's going to be in his name. He's going to be responsible for making sure it's built to state building code. We'll certainly have inspections along the line to do that. Plus, we'll have our engineering folks, whether it's an outside engineer or internally, who have designed the project to do the follow-ups as well. So if that's something you'd like to look at, I would, we would recommend that we look at perhaps waiving that requirement on projects that do require a building permit.
Mr. Chairman, I also share your concerns. I have been talking with at least one contractor who is very concerned. He's small, he needs to sub stuff out. Of course, he's responsible for the whole thing, but still, he is preclude.
Precluded.
Yes. So I think that's something we need to actually look at and address. Back to this issue, what, if my math is right, there's like a $50,000 difference in what the appraisal was and what the bid was. What if we maybe ask if the high bidder could come up, say, ten or twenty thousand? Or maybe ask that we not pay rent if we're going to be in there a year waiting for our building to be bid? What if we ask that we use it, what, rent-free for a year? Is there any way to negotiate with that at all?
We'll certainly go back and...
Those are suggestions, I'm just, you know...
Even if the board decided to move forward today, we wouldn't recommend taking acceptance, but to allow us to go back and negotiate what those terms would look like, and if that's what you would like to include in that negotiation, we'd be happy to do that. If that's the direction the board would like.
Is this something we have to make an ordinance on, or is this an administrative change as far as the subcontractors go?
No, sir, it'd be an administrative change. Yeah, that's just...
Well, we can't go anywhere yet until we have a building to put all this stuff in, and so, until we have a structure, so it might be the right thing to do is go talk to the bidder and see if he'd be willing to negotiate something out. Until we can get this back out on the street for a bid.
And worst scenario, if we can't find a contractor, that old, I believe it was an automotive building is still there, it's in really good shape, it's a block building. In the future, if we needed to go up a story, I think that probably would be a possibility. So worst scenario, if it comes, the prices come in too much and we can't find a place, then that's a really good building.
What automotive building?
It's the one right across from the...
Was it Lowery, the auto parts?
Yeah, Mr. Lowery.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Got you.
Yeah, we'd be glad to look at that.
Do you need direction? How do they need direction from the board to, as far as changing the policy, or is that something that...
Yeah, I think for right now, I would just like direction on any bids that, because they do usually get, they get run by legal before they go out, so I would like some direction if you would like for us to waive that provision in the time being, or just...
Well, I do know that there's, I would dare say, any contractors that have their own full crews now, all of them sub their work out. So unless we plan on building all of our buildings in the future, then we're going to have to do something different. And we've got a great staff to do that, but, you know, they have plenty to do.
Their capacity's taxed as it is.
So I make a recommendation that we waive this, the ruling to have not use subs, as long as we have a licensed contractor that pulls the permit.
Second, that.
All right, with motion in a second.
Let me play devil's advocate. Can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
Administrative?
Well, it's not even something that really requires a vote to begin with. It's not, as long as it's not a controversial issue, that's fine. I think the direction I'm getting is we're just not going to include that in the bid packages until we hear otherwise from y'all.
Well, I just want to make sure that if we go down this road, that we, one of the reasons it's put in here is because we've had some contractors in the past, before the fifty percent rule came in, that created a lot of grief for some of the projects the county took on. So I just want to make sure that our staff is overlooking them to make sure that they are doing what they're required to do.
Yeah, we need to really vet the contractors.
And to be clear, we're, your primarily direction is regarding building projects where there would be a general contractor that would pull a building permit. We're not talking about roads and bridges and a lot of those things, so just to be clear.
All right, and then you're going to reach out to the...
Yeah, we've got...
bidder on the...
Unanimous consent on that direction to...
So do we need to pull our motion in second?
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, good, all right. Any public comment concerning that? Ms. Bowman.
Quayle, I'm in, B-O-W, amen. I have a question. Is this the same First National Bank that is the First National Bank of Cresview that was opened in like 1910?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay, does the Walton County own this bank?
Yes, ma'am. It's a bank building. It hasn't been a bank in a number of years.
No, but I mean, does Walton, the Walton County, own the First National Bank?
The old First National Bank building.
The building?
Yes, just the building.
Not the business that's in it? Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's all right. Okay, moving right along, number twelve.
Thank you, sir. Next item is, we're excited to bring for you the recommendation regarding the bid 017004 for the construction of the new Class 1 solid waste transfer station. Our recommendation is to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, which was Coca-Lockis Contracting. We would recommend and ask that we award the bid to Coca-Lockis and recognize him as the lowest responsive responsible bidder, with direction for staff to value engineer the project, very similar to as we did to the sports parks, then bring back a price and a contract. The, their bid price, while it was the lowest, was still a good bit higher than what we had anticipated, but we do, after reviewing the documents, we do believe there's opportunities there to value engineer and bring that cost down, so we'd like to take that opportunity to meet with the contractor, go through that process, and then bring you back a revised number and a contract to reflect that number. And along with that, we will look at the funding source and make sure we go through the appropriate means to identify the funds and get the funds from reserve accounts to where they need to be.
Well, I have a... Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I was just going to ask you where they're located.
Me, too.
The funds?
No, people, Coca-Lockis or whatever.
Where are they from? Toffler Springs, in Florida.
Okay, is that what they specialize in?
They've done a lot of them, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
And the consulting engineering firm has lots of confidence in them getting the job done.
Lots or lots?
Lot, lots.
Lots, hello, okay, thank you, sir. Motion to approve?
Second. Motion in a second. He threw a discussion from the board. Seeing none, any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Okay, we're talking about regular garbage here, right?
Yes. Class one household garbage, ma'am.
I don't understand why the garbage truck comes by my house twice a week. I'm not in a rental area, I'm in a regular residential neighborhood. Okay, so...
Would you like me to tell you why? Because the franchise agreement and the contract with Waste Management, who is the garbage hauler for the county, says they will come by your house and pick your garbage up two times a week.
Okay, when the garbage truck drives by my house, it causes an earthquake and shakes my house.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, you know, you know this?
Well, I mean, you're telling us, I'm just...
Okay, so is there something that we can do about that? Because I think it's sort of not right that just in order to have my garbage removed from my property, that you should actually have to damage my property.
I don't know of any reason, any way that we can do that. There are not hover baggies out there now that hover without touching the ground. You're just going to have to learn to live with it.
Are you kidding me?
Yes, ma'am, I'm not kidding.
Okay, well, let's talk about this. On the side of the garbage trucks, it actually says recycling enough garbage to power nine million homes. So does the taxpayer profit from that recycling in any way?
That is a statement made by them, based as their company worldwide. What they collect and recycle, that's what they come up with. That's their logo or information. It has nothing to do with the county.
Okay, so also, an island is like a boat. Everything you haul on it has to be hauled off. Down at the post office, they have a garbage can that's marked recycling, because we're forced in our mailboxes, both at my house and my PO, I get these flyers that are basically like garbage, and I just throw them immediately into the recycling bin. So now that's a twenty-gallon garbage can, and it's filled up at least three or four times a week. So we're talking about a hundred pounds of waste that has to be driven onto the island and then driven off the island. And I just want to let you know that on other Florida key islands, they don't allow junk mail, nothing larger than a five-by-seven postcard, to prevent this unnecessary over-trafficed and overhauling of garbage. So I'm just saying that maybe we wouldn't have to invest so much in a new waste transfer station if you weren't allowing people to produce so much garbage because they're having garbage forced upon them. So I just would like for you all to think of ways in which we could be less garbage-producing, and think, and maybe talk to some of the southern Florida Keys about how they deal with their waste management.
Ms. Bowman and I worked for the postal service for thirty years, believe me. I wish they had never had to deliver a piece of junk mail, but that's the postal service's business, not Walton County's.
Okay, well, in...
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
On other islands, they do control it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we got a motion in a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next two items are from Public Works, and we're going to ask Chance Powell to address them. Mr. Powell.
Yes, Chance Powell, for the record, thank you. First item there is on the bike path, multi-use path update or master plan update. You know, that came before the board back in December, I believe. It's been out for public comment now. I've received a lot of positive emails on it. I think most of those were in your packet, that everyone that I've received was. I did have one item that I needed to correct that was brought to my attention earlier today. The map indicates that there's an eight-foot bike path on both sides of 98 from Orange Street over to Bay County Line. That is incorrect. It is, I believe, in the East Corridor Improvement Plan that Ms. Lee Moore is working on. She brought that to my attention, so I'll make that correction, you know, following this meeting. If you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chance?
No.
Okay, any public comment? Hang on, Ms. Bowman. Celeste, come on.
Before we do a public comment?
No, this is...
We, well, we can take a motion. I'll tell you what, hang on a minute, please. What's the board's wishes on that? We'll get a motion in a second, then we'll have a comment.
I think it's just an update.
Is this an update?
It says request approval.
Or does she need something else?
I would really like for the board to accept it. That way, we can work off of it, the priority ranking that's in there.
Motion to approve?
Second it with the corrections made to it.
All right, now we have a motion in a second. Ms. Cabina.
Well, first, I want to say I think this is great forward-thinking by the county to get a master plan for multi-use paths all through the county. I think this'll solve some of our transportation problems, but I was just looking at this this afternoon, and I see some issues, and I spoke with Chance about it just a few minutes ago before the meeting started, and particularly number three and number forty-two, because they're really, and he admits, some of them really aren't feasible. I've been real familiar with a lot of the trails back in the woods and the forest, and have worked with Forestry and the Division of Recreation Parks with trails. Now, they're not going to be paved trails and that sort of thing, but about, since 1992, I'd like to see a really great network of trails throughout here. So moving forward, I really would like to see some sort of a committee formed to assist the county with ranking these, getting things done, and including, because I know I was speaking, I was talking to some of the folks at the bike store today, you know, we've, that is big business here in Walton County, and I think those are the, we need to incorporate user groups, and a lot of the vendors, bike stores, or anyone who's using these trails, both in, if we could connect up some of what I'm going to call the off-road trails with the bike path. I know you were doing it down on the Blue Mountain Road, and so moving forward, I would just like to see more input in a committee possibly somehow formed. I know I hate to go to meetings and committees, but I think that would really help refine this and get some really useful trails that I think we can use for transportation and recreation.
Good, thank you. Ms. Bowman?
Never mind.
Never mind. Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Commissioners. Lee Moore, representing the Scenic Corridor Foundation, and we just want to commend the commission and staff for putting this plan together. It is, I echo what Celeste said without repeating... It is, um, I echo what Celeste said without repeating it, agree one hundred percent. Also, um, I read the public comment that was received, agree with all of that one hundred percent. I think this is long-term, gonna have a real im, positive impact here, um, in this area. And, um, I do have one question. It, is it a fluid plan? In other words, will it be revisited? And I know Celeste made a couple of comments. I've pointed that one thing out to Chance and apologized for being a little late to the party and really looking at this in detail. Um, but I'm just wondering if, if, if this will be revisited on a regular basis to adjust, make changes, um, add things that may be new needs?
Okay, uh, I would suspect Chance would be doing that continuously. Uh, 'cause things change. If you looked at total, bottom line is sixty-two million dollars worth of-
Yep.
-bike paths and all that. That's a lot of money. It ain't gonna be done next week.
No.
Uh, we're probably gonna have to look at these and try and prioritize as best we can to get it where we can manage it financially.
Yeah, I, I think it's very much a long, long-term project.
And this is a long term.
For sure, but I'm really happy to see it getting, getting put in place and prioritized and, and, um, once I started on, because a lot of pathway works already been done.
Right.
But continuing it and getting it in organized fashion, really commend you. And, um, I, I too, again, hate another meeting and committee and whatever else, but I think that there's probably some good input to be had from a lot of different constituents from the community as well. So, I think it, since it is such a long-term thing, um, initiative, I think a committee might be helpful going forward to help with some input from, um, end users. Not that the staff's not doing a great job, they are, but I think that would be beneficial.
So, so Lee, when you call me for another meeting, I can say, you said you hated me?
I actually, I, I've got a lot, so, I don't, I don't hate them, I hate to add another one, let's put it that way. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I think we have a motion to accept and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. All right, I think next up is, uh, thirty-eight traffic study update. Again.
Yes sir, I'm, I'm gonna try to do a little brief summary history update of where, where we've been, where, where we're hopefully going. Um, and I also have, uh, John Fielding with Atkins here, who did the most recent update to that two thousand and six Genesis study. Maybe he can fill in any gaps that I, that I leave. The, the traffic study update was initiated to address traffic congestion concerns on thirty-eight, specifically, uh, this most recent update, to look at the traffic congestion concerns at three ninety-five and thirty-eight intersection. Um, as you know, back in two thousand and six, the, the Genesis did that study, and it had several recommendations in it. One, addressing that congestion was looking at alternate routes from thirty-eight to ninety-eight. Um, there was some, I guess, some ideas brought to, uh, the previous District Five Commissioner. Um, one of those was to connect San Juan over to three ninety-five to help relieve some of that congestion. Uh, we, we looked at that. It, it got a lot of input and a lot of discussion by that community in and around Seagrove and just east of three ninety-five there. We looked at that, and we said, hey, what if, what if we just don't connect straight to San Juan and make it a dedicated thoroughfare? And continue that on over to, say, the eastern Seagrove area, close to where the old Gourd Garden is, if y'all are familiar with that. It's still got a lot of, lot of discussion, and, and that's when Atkins took it up and, and started looking at the, the opportunities and what, what could, what could take place. And, and through that whole process, we wound up with an, an alternate route possibility that shifted all the way up north of Nature Walk, tying back into three ninety-five. Then another opportunity that was sister dam beside the power line easement that everybody's familiar with, just east of Seagro, uh, east of Eastern Lake. And then another alternative that was brought up by Ms. Celeste Cabina, which is, uh, on the far eastern boundary of the Deer Lake State Property. Um, the board decided to only look at two of those alternatives, which was alternate four, which is the one that skirts just north of Nature Walk and ties into three ninety-five, and the one at the eastern boundary of Deer Lake State Park. And, and I think what happened through this whole process is it allowed us to, to really, we focused on those, not the, not the power line easement. And, and what we wound up with was, alternate four was actually more of a, an impact, I believe. It's what most people thought. It's just going up the power line easement. Um, and, and I, I think that's when we sort of, as a group, all looked back, you know, what, what are we doing? What, what is the right thing to do? And we also have other things to consider that are happening in the, you know, in, in South Walton with the sports complex, the schools on ninety-eight. Um, and, uh, I, I'm gonna ask John to come up and maybe give a little bit of the, the most previous presentation that he did when Commissioner Anderson was not here, and, uh, and sort of the recommendations of the final report there, and, and, and maybe seek some direction from, from the board.
John, just identify yourself to the clerk.
Yes sir, uh, John Fielding, Atkins. My address is in Bay County, is, is that any? Uh, Fielding, F-I-E-L-D-I-N-G.
Okay, John?
Uh, thank you commissioner. Um, it's good to be here again. And just to, you know, to summarize again what Chance has said, you know, we were tasked with updating the traffic study that Genesis had done. Um, just to briefly summarize that, the, the overall outcome was that we saw that, um, the projections that Genesis made, uh, were probably a little actually on the low side of the development that we actually saw flesh out for a ten-year period from what we expected. So it's been growing probably a little bit more than was originally planned, but, um, so that there's been a continued need for what Genesis saw in their traffic study, which is that, um, some sort of bypass around thirty-eight, three ninety-five area, some pop-off valve, if you will, um, is still valuable consideration. Um, so we took that, um, under the direction of the board, and it was put in our task work order, which is just to see, you know, how impactful is this? And to kind of give it a feasibility to take it to preliminary discussions with, you know, forestry with, um, with DEP in Tallahassee, and just, you know, get very early feelers out. Um, and obviously, you know, the, the state forest lands being there is a very important natural resource that DEP protects. Um, and in this case, they, they have adopted policies regarding this exact type of scenario, which is the DEP linear facility policy. And that basically spells out how they treat, um, a need for something of this nature through state lands. And the DEP linear facility process basically states that, you know, you will analyze different alternative routes, um, that you will look for every opportunity to provide, you know, mitigation, that you will show a strong need for something like that. And so basically, that's, you know, that's the process that we followed throughout our study and found that it fits within the guidelines the DEP has adopted. Uh, and as Chance mentioned, we took alternate four. Um, we looked at the, you know, even looked at the route on the eastern boundary that Ms. Cabina suggested as well. Um, we also did preliminary look at, um, what we'd call alternate one, um, which is essentially following that power lines as greatly as possible to see, you know, what is the, what is the least impactful scenario? And as Chance mentioned, you know, just the, the way that the alternate four sort of snowballed into going north of Nature Walk, uh, meant that, you know, that road gets longer and longer. Um, and something we didn't understand until we went and met with the forestry is the impact that, you know, a road like that has on their, you know, in their mission for the area in burning, you know, in their prescribed burning. Because there is a smaller segment of the forest that's essentially cornered off. Um, it makes it very challenging for them to, to manage that area. So, you know, it was about exploring things, you know, in that nature. What we came to at the end of the day was to say that there's, you know, the traffic perspective, um, is still showing that, you know, if a route like that existed, there is, you know, there is a demand for it, there is use, you know, it would be used in the realm of three to five thousand cars per day, which is similar to what you see on Watersound Parkway, twelve thousands about what you see on three ninety-five. Um, and so to take that forward and just say, you know, what do we do as a next step if, you know, if we're interested in exploring this? Well, the very next step is to take this through DEP's linear facility process, which is related to what we call a project development and environmental study. What that does is go and seek out all of the various information that would be necessary to determine what are the impacts. And, and something that stuck with me, I think that Ms. Cabina said when we were going through this process, was that, you know, you know, a road does not present a benefit to the state forest. And that's correct. Putting pavement on the ground does not benefit, you know, natural lands. So it's about finding mitigating, finding ways of mitigation for creating something along those lines. And that was what the PDNE's process, um, does. And within that process, there's essentially three levels of it, and it depends on how you intend on pursuing funding. Um, there's a federal process, you know, that would be the NEPA, National Environmental Protection Agency, process called, something called a categorical exclusion and environmental impact study. And that's probably the most aggressive form of PDNE that we know of. And that is, um, used in the situation where you anticipate federal funding. The next step down from that, something we call the Project Environmental Impact Report, a PIER. Um, that is a state mandated process. It follows their standard procedure for assessing the different types of socio, socioeconomic and, um, and environmental impacts within an area. That leaves you eligible for things like state funding. Um, it's also accepted by state agencies like DEP, who manages the state lands. And so it's a, basically an agreed-upon process of how to go about determining whether or not this is actually doable, um, whether it's best to carry something forward or to do nothing. And then, you know, from the, from the lowest-end perspective, there's, you know, just general local processes. If you have a, you know, if you have a new road that you're planning that doesn't impact, you know, any type of state lands and would be completely county-funded, then it's essentially up to your own public, you know, your public input. Um, as we expected throughout this process, you know, it's been of great interest to the public, um, probably the least controversial thing I'm sure you guys have ever seen. But, um, something we feel is great about the PIER process, like I said, it's what we recommended to be followed for considering an alignment because it is a state-adopted policy. It includes a lot of outreach, public outreach, public input throughout the process. It involves keeping that in every, in the forefront of everybody's mind and attention so that, you know, everything is done, um, on as transparent a level as possible. Um, so that was the recommendation we made. Um, and of course, at that time, Commissioner Anderson wasn't able to be there. So, I hope I've summarized that effectively. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them where I can.
Commissioners, you have any questions?
Um, I don't know that I have a question. I think I have a statement. I figure at this point, y'all may be able to shoot me, but, I mean, you know, that's it. Um, we have been working on this problem since before I came a commissioner in two thousand and six. The county has been chewing on this since at least two thousand and three that I know of. And it's not getting any better. We're touting how we're the largest growing county in the state, if not, you know, one in the nation. But we don't have roads for all these people that move down here with the mommy and daddy and two-point-three kids to get around. Um, I, I feel like it's time that, um, we're not gonna make everybody happy. Um, that, that we look at what is best for everybody overall. I personally think the road next to the power line is the only plausible. It will take you from thirty-eight right to the sports park. I'm thinking of all those mothers and their little kids playing soccer. Um, it is a direct route to ninety-eight. We won't be going through neighborhoods. We won't be going all the way practically to Bay County to put one in. Um, to me, that is the obvious that we need to do this study on, 'cause even at that, it's gonna be what, two, three years?
Uh, it usually takes twelve to eighteen months.
Yeah, so we're looking at two years or more, and then to try to find funding. So, I think it's some, it's time for us to, you know, we're not gonna make everybody happy. I, I think, a, and I have studied this for a very long time, that this seems to be the only plausible way to me to go along those power lines, which are already there, and, and, and put in, and, and DOT has regulations about roads like that, about fences, and, you know, so people can't get off into the forest. It, it can be made a road that nobody can, you know, they're off into. So, that is my suggestion. I don't, I don't need a vote, or, you know.
Is that a motion?
I'll, I have a question first. Um, this study that we're talking about doing, it's gonna give us options. It's gonna study this whole area, and we have to do this before we can make a decision on any road.
Yes ma'am, so the, the intent is that you would look for the least impactful alternative that accomplishes, you know, the goals that you set forth. And I think, um, probably something I didn't summarize was when we, you know, originally came back and, and did the presentation on what we called Phase Two. Um, we recommended keeping, you know, keeping our options as open as possible. And I think at that time, we had talked about not considering, you know, the power line road. And so our suggestion was then to, you know, to, if, obviously this is something that you have to go out and advertise for services for, um, to write it in such a way that you're saying, you know, look for the least impactful alternative that accomplishes the goals of, you know, facilitating movement between thirty-eight and ninety-eight. Not necessarily tie it down to one specific location. Um, I think that's too narrow a focus, but to look for that, you know, to look for that route that creates the least impact.
Well, I certainly would like more information, um, myself, so...
Well, if we can put the, that power line back on the, the list, maybe that's the suggestion I need to make, and not eliminate it.
Well, I don't think you'll be eliminating anything, will you, John?
No, and that's what I was suggesting. I think when we, we originally talked about this, um, and I believe this was October, November, or December of seventeen, or sixteen, it's been a while. Um, was that, at that time, we sort of, we focused on alternate four. And alternate four was the one that we generated different alignments of a potential alternate four. And we didn't really consider alternate one as carefully. And so we were, we were focused on that sort of cutoff. And I would say, you know, instead of suggesting, hey, let's look for thirty-eight to three ninety-five, and say, look for a, you know, an alternative that accomplishes the goal of facilitating movement from thirty-eight to US ninety-eight. And implicitly, that, you know, that includes something along the power lines or, you know, something between thirty-eight and three ninety-five, something that, you know, works itself around the constraints of the area.
Okay, um, I take it, we probably need, Chance, you tell me, give direction to you and John as to go ahead and begin the PDNE or these, doing what has to be done to meet the state requirements by looking at different sites?
Uh, what, what, what I would love to, to see happen is, uh, mirror their recommendation and, uh, Atkins' recommendation, and re, give us the authority to go out for an RFQ to have a PDNE study done to meet the, uh, parameters mentioned by, by John.
Does a motion need to be specific to where the PDNE is gonna be conducted?
Uh, I think it would just, you know, as, as long as we have the PDNE focus on, uh, congestion relief of thirty-eight, looking at routes to move traffic from thirty-eight to US ninety-eight, uh, in the general area of the Seagrove, uh...
All right, so that basically leave it open to considerations, San Juan, or option four, or one, whatever.
I don't wanna say San Juan, because I, I think the opportunity for us to connect anything to San Juan or any of those neighborhoods there is, is completely off the table.
All right, it's off the table.
Uh, not, not to change, not to change your direction, but I know we got into some-
Okay.
A lot of heated discussion over that in the past.
We don't want it going through any neighborhood that's gonna have five thousand cars going through their neighborhood. So, yeah, can we do it just saying, look, looking for the mo, the least impactful way to re, to relieve our problem?
Yes, and I think that's, that's what we suggested, um, essentially because you'll, you will establish the constraints, um, in, you know, in joint partnership with, you know, the public at the beginning of the study. So, um, so, you know, if every, if everybody says, I absolutely do not want a connection here, that becomes a constraint. You know, we look for a route that has no connections. Um, you know, we don't want any commercial development. Well, then we look for areas where we can't possibly have, you know, a commercial corridor, you know. We, obviously, sort of what we walked through with the alternate fours, you know, the, the basic constraints that, you know, that everybody seems to know fairly well is, you know, where wetlands located, where floodplains located. There's a lot of social constraints as well that get worked out through the very beginning stages of the process, and, you know, like I said, in partnership with the public.
Okay. All right, what's the board's wishes?
Did you make a motion, sir?
No, sir.
Well, I make a motion.
Mine apparently was trampled on, so you go next.
I don't think you've trampled on it. I, I make a motion, we move forward. Would, like you said, commissioner, we've, we've, this has been talked about since early two thousand.
And that's to move forward with the PDNE study?
Yeah.
And not specific to one area, but to find this other areas?
And I'll second that.
Second, okay.
Just for clarity, does the motion need to state to develop an RFQ to bring back for board approval?
Yes.
To, to accomplish what you just said?
You modify yours?
Yeah.
Modify your second?
Right, and just to, to further explain, that, your suggestion would be considered in all of this, but I, I won't, you know, I wanna look at it holistically with every option, and, and we have to do this before we can make any decision anyway. It's a preliminary thing, so...
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Is any public comment? In the back, Celeste? Come on, Ms. Bowman, you're closer.
I would just like to say that we can't build any more roads because, uh, the island has already been destabilized by, um, the ridiculous amount of building that's been going on. I'd also like to remind you that the federal government set down the rule that not more than forty percent of this island could be developed, which we are past now. So, um, it's not about opening the doors for more people to move here. It's about, um, stopping people from coming here. We're full, the boat is full. If we put any more people on it, we'll sink. Uh, if you cut down any more trees to build any more roads, uh, the island is just going to wash away after the next hurricane. And I'm sure that everybody down here with all their mega-million-dollar houses really don't wanna see the island wash away after the next storm, uh, pouring concrete, um... Pouring concrete on the ground is just a horrible thing to do to this land, and like you said, this area is full of wetlands and marshes, and that's why it was not supposed to be fully developed. You guys have just gotten out of control. You can't cut through that forest, any part of the forest, because it all belongs to me. The Internal Improvement Trust Fund of Florida does not own this forest. When they spent $20 million a section to quote "buy" it, what they were actually doing was paying a 200-year-old debt to the railroad. This property originated as Indian land, according to two presidents and an act of Congress. The TIITF allowed the railroad to harvest trees off of it to build the railroad from Pensacola to Apalachicola, because the TIITF did not have any money to pay the railroad to do this, so they said that they could use this island to harvest trees from in order to pay for the railroad. So then the railroad sublet it to Sub Joe, that sublet it to Paper Factory, that sublet it to this person, that sublet it to this person. So when the Internal Improvement Trust Fund purchased all of this land back, they actually weren't purchasing it, they were paying a 180-year-old debt. This land all belongs to me because I am the ancestral descendant of the Choctaw people to whom this land was promised by two presidents of the United States and an act of Congress. So you actually can't do anything here without my permission. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cabina.
Commissioners, I think if you move forward with this study, you really need to include some options that do not impact the state forest or the state park. And I keep hearing talk about the state forest, but, you know, some of these options, that power line easement is not just state forest land, it's also part of Deer Lake State Park. So you've got two agencies to deal with, and you're going to impact the state park and the state forest. And I, I'm very familiar with the process, and I think it's highly unlikely that you're going to get a road that's going to impact all those wetlands along that power line. And I think that's why you need to look at other options. And that eastern segment there that we looked at, that was not my idea. That was something back in 2003, when this was looked at, forestry suggested that. And I'm just mimicking what forestry said back in 2003. So that's when they said, if you want a road, put it on the border. That helps us because then they've got a fire break, you can put it on St. Joe's property, and that's the option that you need to continue to look at, or private property, because I think this easement is going to be extremely difficult for a lot of reasons, for environmental reasons, for wetland reasons, for cost reasons. And I'm going to remind you that that easement is owned by Alabama Electric. And if you go to Alabama Electric's website, they talk about what you can and cannot do on easements. And one of the things is roads. You cannot build on the easement because then they, it causes issues for them. They also discourage building power, and it says on their website, they discourage building parallel to easements because then it impacts their ability. And they even, I can quote here, you can look at it, it also means that, and they're kind of talking about private property here, but it then, these private roads could become public roads, and they impede their easement. So they have a lot of concerns about this. So it's not just, that is owned and bought by Alabama Electric. So it's not just getting permission from the state of Florida, you're going to have to deal with the owner of that easement, which purchased it, I've got the document here, they purchased that in 1987. It was not owned by the state at the time, it was owned by St. Joe and Emerald Coast Joint Venture. So you must consider some private option or, you know, just realize you've got to stop development because there's, it's highly unlikely you're going to get a road through the forest and the parks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Dave, yeah?
Dave Rochkow, R-A-U-S-C-H-K-O-L-B. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate Celeste, her research, she's very passionate, she represents, I would say, a small but vocal group of folks. I would consider myself an environmentalist, I don't think anyone would disagree with that. However, when this land was purchased originally, there were already roads that are equidistantly arranged from one end of 38 to the other, and the one blank spot that should have had a road is right there at the power line. I believe that that location has the least possible impact and will greatly improve the congestion along 38. We've got 800 homes at prominence, 800 homes, multiply that by the people that live there, all of Water Sound, a lot of the folks that are over near in the Eastern Lake area, that would normally drive down 38 to go to 395, would simply turn around, boom, go straight out there. You have the sports park that was mentioned, you have the school there. Yes, it's a matter of convenience, but it's also a matter of taking the, taking people off of 38 during the most congested times. Obviously, this is a controversial issue, but one of the main concerns that people have is that there could be possibly construction or development on that road. And I wouldn't support anything that would involve development along the power line road or access. So that's a big concern. And then there's a slippery slope argument that if you allow a road to go through a state park, then suddenly, state parks are going to be developed on it. Well, I don't believe that that's going to happen. This is an access road, it doesn't involve development. So I would strongly hope that you all would consider, in your infinite wisdom, to take this option, you know, down the road, no pun intended, and to the betterment of South Walton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Rochkow, could I, Mr. Rochkow?
Dave.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I know you travel that road quite often.
Mm-hmm.
I have personally traveled it and been backed up to Eastern Lake.
Yes.
And it's taken me an hour to get from there or more to 395. And just to let, just to ask you, that's not a rare occurrence during the summer, is it?
No, I would say four months out of the year, it's a daily occurrence, and it's becoming more common in the shoulder season as well. So I don't think the situation's going to get any better. I think things are going to be improved with the 395 intersection. I think that when it's finished, it's going to be an improvement, but it's still going to be a bottleneck any way you look at it. And the way this thing was planned, I mean, you look at those roads, equidistant, the one place that's empty is right there, and it's almost exactly there. So, you know, if the state, Alabama Power, if the DEP, at any point, they can say no. But I think, you know, for the citizens of South Walton to look the other way and not do this, it's just going to get worse and worse. Plus, you know, the Camp Creek Parkway, whatever it's called, is already getting backed up. I've seen traffic all the way, almost the length of that road backed up, trying to come in and people turn, you know, getting ready to try to turn to go up that road. So, yeah, we have to go forwards, to go backwards, you know, to go to the west, but, you know, it's not going to get any better. And, you know, I think that this can be built in a way that provides for wildlife corridors. Yes, it'll be more expensive to do that. Yes, it'll be more expensive to have more bridges and so forth and so on, but I think that we should make that a priority. Build this road so it has the least amount of impact. That's what I would say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, a couple hands fell up. You and certain white shirts, you'll be next.
Hunter Harmon, H-A-R-M-A-N. I just wanted to come up and say I echo the comments that Dave made about the location of that road. It makes perfect sense to put that road in that location, right there, close to the power line. It's equidistant, just as he said, and I can promise you, we need this dramatically, dramatically, as soon as we can get it.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Stephen McBroom, S-T-E-P-H-N, M-C-B-R-O-O-M. And if we build a road, you know, you look on 38, you see trash all over the place, and the pavement over there, I mean, it's just going to create more frustration, and then plus the state park issue. You know, the state parks are for people to enjoy, and then we have, you know, like, we know we have deer and bear and everything, so what's going to prevent them from, you know, being impacted? So there's a lot more to this than just making a decision just to cut through a state park, because we don't have many of them left in this area.
Okay, thank you. Come on, Bonnie.
This is just to do the study, I think. Bonnie McQuiston, M-C-Q-U-I-S-T-O-N. Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Jones, for saying that you really want to consider a lot of different things, not just this thing, this road through the power line. I think you need to add an option that would be no road, no road. And that would be no new roads, because I don't think that you will get, that we will get the road through the forest. I think this will generate a war, an absolute war, as we've had before, when people have tried to put a road there, or when the developers have tried to get some of the state land back. It will, it will galvanize people to fight for our preservation land. We do have to protect that. We've got to balance development and our preservation land, because there are only two things that make us different from Destin and Panama City, and that is our state land, which balances, gives us some environmental protection and the 50-foot height limit. Those two things make us different. I think we need to protect that at all costs, and I think the people will come together to do that. You know, you're talking about four months of the year, I think it was mentioned, and actually, you talked about this will get people to 98. I think more than anything, this is just another way to bring more people to 38 from 98. I don't know, you know, I, it'll be another bottleneck, wherever you put a new road. So I just wanted to say, please have one of the options is that if it doesn't work out on the eastern boundary, it doesn't work out through San Juan, it doesn't, and it will not work out by the power lines. Then another option is, you just, you know, people may have to drive a little farther. I mean, what is it, three miles from, I don't know, where the power lines are down to the St. Joe Road, or, you know, four miles back the other way. So maybe a little inconvenience for four months out of the year, but we'll protect our state land. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, I think too, Bonnie, if I'm not mistaken, Chance, one of the, I mean, the study could very well say no road.
I believe, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the first option of all PDNE studies is no building.
Okay. Okay. I know everybody wants to talk, and we need to move the agenda on. Now, this thing here, all we did is ask them to go out and do the PDNE study initially. We will not make a decision on it tonight. You can save your public comments, if you like, until this is brought back to us for a review or decision. Because there's still people who want to talk. I got three hands up. At the end of those three, we're going to close public comment on this matter and move forward. Bob Brooke, come on.
Bob Brooke, B-R-O-O-K-E. I'd just like to make a suggestion. For years now, we've been looking at the problems on 38 and the 38 and 98 connector roads, and we seem to try to address them in a piecemeal fashion. One time, we struggled with this for years, was solving the intersection problem at 395 and 38. Excuse me. And now we've got a connector road on the east end of, between Eastern Lake and Deer Lake State Park. I would like to suggest that we look at the 98, 38, and connector roads running between the two as an entity, as a whole, and try to look at, for the sake of a better word, a master plan that looks to the future and says, how are we going to solve our traffic problems in that corridor, those corridors in that area? And I'd ask Commissioners, when you instruct Chance and his people to do this study, that they look at it from a broader perspective than just trying to add a connector road here, an intersection fix here, let's look at it as how we fix the county's traffic problems in the 38, 98 and connector road area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Yes, sir. And the striped shirt there, you'd be next and last on this topic.
Thank you, sir. Scott Crompton. I want to commend Ms. Bowman.
Scott, what was your last name?
Crompton, C-R-O-M-P-T-O-N. I want to commend you, Ms. Bowman, you know, there are people out in this, in our community that are out for themselves, and it happens in all societies, and I appreciate you being the balance for that, I really do.
Sir, speak to the board.
I'm sorry, I was just committing Ms. Bowman for speaking out in any situation. So I think we're missing an opportunity here. Whether that road is built or not is not going to impact more houses being built, it's just a function of getting people off of 38 and onto the four-lane road. That's really the function here. So instead of looking at this as two different sides, why don't we, why don't we, as a group, Ms. Bowman's assistants and everybody else, develop like the greatest road through a state park in our city? Why don't we lead this track? Why don't we lead this, like 38 Trace or something, like they have in the Natchez Trace in Mississippi or something? Why don't we create a solution that is not just a road, but something that's, everybody can look to as a way to do things right and correct, and that protects the environment and gives people the chance to get off the road? So I think that, I hope we could, as we develop plans, I don't know what the Alabama Power is going to say, or what, how that's going to work out.
We don't either. We've got to wait until it gets done and.
Nobody does, but maybe our whole voice for this should be towards the fact that it's inevitable that we need to get folks off 38. Is there a way to do it that is different, is unique, is new, and it sets an example and a way for everybody to be proud of? I think there's a solution there somewhere, and I hope we can get there without being on both sides of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Robert Weil, W-E-I-L.
What was his name again?
Robert Weil, W-E-I-L. Just in interest of time, I want to keep it brief and say I agree with everything that Mr. Rochkow said. I guess my only objection would be that, I guess mirroring what Commissioner Anderson said, we've got traffic backed up. My objection being that if it's going to take 18 months, that's another year and a half that we're going to have the traffic. So I encourage you to find a solution as quick as possible, and again, I agree with what Mr. Rochkow said. Thank you.
Okay, close public comment. Got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All right, Mr. Tuss, I believe you're up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just have one agenda item and a couple of updates, so I should be brief. So for the agenda item, put on my glasses so I can read. Number 15, request direction on property located on Highway 331 South for a new TDC facility. You can see there the parcel numbers, 29-2S-19-24000-008-0040. And then the next one is the same number and the prefects, and then dash 0060, and then the final number is the same prefects, dash 0070. So just if you're not familiar with these parcel numbers, I'll just kind of briefly tell you where these are located. This is the old Sandcastle's Vacation Rentals Building on 331, and then Regional Utilities owns a vacant piece of property adjacent to that, to the south. And then further south, next door to that vacant piece of property, is a plumbing company. So these three parcels make up about 4.4 acres. The vacation rental firm building sits on about 2.2 acres. The regional utilities piece is a little over one, and then the plumbing building parcel is just about one acre. So I found this, I've been looking for a potential site for a new TDC facility for quite some time, and obviously, 331 is very attractive to us in the way of being able to put a visitor center on the site, as well as admin, operations type of facility, and beach maintenance as well, if it can all fit on this property, that's to kind of be determined. But I thought I'd bring this forward for the board for consideration, to see if there was any interest in this. was any interest in this property, and in doing possibly some due diligence in the form of a land use report or appraisals, title search. This is kind of what we've done on these other parcels that we purchased over the past couple of years.
All right, Commissioners, I hadn't met with Jay earlier this week, yesterday if I ain't mistaken.
Yep.
And I understand that preliminarily, these two parcels are somewhere, correct me if I'm wrong, around $3 million, give or take?
Give or take.
We haven't got the appraisals, obviously.
Yeah.
Now, I mentioned to Jay, I prefer, if we can, we go down here to where we're sitting here. We've got this land, vacant land between the tower and this road, and it goes back to that wood line, where the wood, wetlands are, that maybe we utilize it. It's on the right side of the road for visitors coming in. And we would save a lot of property cost.
You know how many acres, Mel?
Uh, he was gonna pull it up. I don't know if he's done yet or not.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at it. I mean, obviously, the Air Force has, you know, transmitter site on a big chunk of that property. So I do have some staff looking into seeing if they can locate that lease and what the terms of that lease are. I don't know if the property between the transmitter site and the annex is large enough. That's something that I have to probably get with planning, because there's some wetlands in the back portion of that. So we'd have to do some homework on that, but I'd be happy to do that and bring that back to the board.
That's what I was talking with him about, is we go, the tower's fenced.
Yeah.
But everything around it is the county's. And I know it ain't the best thing to have a big tower in front yard, but the thing is, I believe there may be enough from the far western edge or western fence of the tower site back to the creek that runs back in here, crosses under here. We just need to know how many acres is there, whether or not you could lay out a building. I'm pretty sure right now, and you can continue checking, Forest, I mean, not Forest Street, Eglin is not gonna give up that tower site till that lease is expired, and I'm not sure when that is.
And I think we, if my memory serves me, it wasn't too long ago that we renewed that lease.
They have. I don't recall.
For some reason, it sticks in my mind.
It takes out part of that property.
It takes out part of it.
I, I make a motion that he moves forward on, does due diligence on the property he's talking about, and also on, on the county property.
Okay, that's, got a motion?
I'll second that motion.
And a second. Any other discussion?
I just did have a question now, is, are these parcels for sale now?
They are, correct.
Okay.
The Sandcastle's building, it's not technically on the market, but now that we're talking about it publicly, who knows? Property goes up quick around here, and if somebody's interested in it, there's nothing to stop them from going to talk to that owner. When I approached him, he was interested in doing a lease on that property. And when I kind of explained who I was and what I was interested in, he said that he would entertain selling the property. And I asked him about cost, and he said, you know, he goes, I really don't have an idea, just because I wasn't really considering selling it. He goes, but I think something along the lines. I explained the process of how we work with appraisals and appraised values, and he said that was something he'd be willing to work with us on. The property next door and the regional utilities, they told me that they would sell that to us at appraised value, and they did supply me an appraisal they had done recently, and that's 355. And then the plumbing building is on the market currently, but it's, it's high. They want $950,000 for that piece of property. So, and when I spoke to the real estate agent, he said that they really weren't motivated on the price. So we'll just kind of have to see.
The, the other property that's not the one with Sandcastle is, do you have an appraisal on that yet?
On, on the Sandcastle building?
Yeah.
On that property? I do not.
Okay.
I do not.
So we have a motion and a second to move forward with our process concerning due diligence.
I have one more question. What about the buildings? Are they something that you could, like the Sandcastle building? Is that something that you could use, or are we talking about a total new?
I think we're, I think ultimately, we're talking about a new facility. That building, if I remember correctly, talking with the owner, I think it's 5,050, 500 square feet. And right now, we have 7,500 square feet over on the corner of 331 and 98 in our facility. So it depends on if the site can accommodate both beach maintenance and kind of the admin side of things. With the wetlands in that back corner, I don't know. Maybe it's a pipe dream of mine to try to get everybody together. But I'd like to see if we could. But obviously, when we do the land use reports, that would kind of come out when we do those and, and get that information. So I could just bring that back to the board and say, look, we did it, and we can only put visitor center and admin here. So we'll have to kind of do something else for beach operations. Both of our current sites are leased, so I think in, in time, it would be good if we look for something for both of our facilities that are owned by the county.
Okay. All right, got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment concerning this topic? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right, any updates, Mr. Tuss?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for that. We will get working on that, and hopefully, we can get back some information as quickly as possible. Just a quick update on TDT collections for December. We were up 16.05% year-over-year, December to December. So we had a total of $651,529.85. So year-over-year, we're up almost 9%, 8.72. So we're at, right now, 2.8, just a little over 2.8 million dollars year-over-year. So good numbers. You know, we had a little bit of an offset in numbers in October. We were down 2.4%. But we have found out since, from the clerk's office, that we had a bed tax collector who did not remit their taxes in October. They remitted them in November. So that's why we were down that month and up a little bit another month. So all in all, we're still very good for the year.
Okay.
One quick update I'd like to bring to your attention, just kind of what's going on with the legislature regarding the TDC. There is a House and Senate bill regarding economic development and tourism program accountability. So this bill is requiring more transparency of contracts and activity of TDCs. And quite honestly, it really isn't gonna impact us, I don't think, too much. We have a lot of transparency, obviously, the TDC and the county. Just a few things, case in point, the contracts of $250,000 or greater need to be reviewed by the county commission. Well, we already do that. So that's not really something that's gonna really impact us. You know, no bonuses, you know, unless specified, we don't give bonuses. You know, no board salaries. We don't have board salaries for our, our TDC council members. So it defines per diem rates and hotel rates. We already do that. So I think it, it's great that, you know, the state wants to put transparency and make that a forefront for them, but we're already doing a lot of it. So I don't really think there's gonna really be a lot of impact on us in regard to that one particular item. This is something I'd like to bring to your attention. It's expansion of TDT funds. And so this bill would expand the use of TDT funds to include things like maintenance and construction of public facilities. Public facilities, facilities, excuse me, are defined as transportation, sewers, solid waste facilities, drainage, water, and pedestrian facilities. So I think what's important, though, for this is, if this were to move forward, it would require a two-thirds vote of the DCC. It would only allow 70% of funding for these projects. And then we would have to demonstrate that these public facilities would be a benefit to increased tourism-related businesses. And then also, some analysis would need to be performed by a third-party independent entity to basically say, okay, yeah, these are justified, and we can use TDT funds, you know, for these expenses. So be interesting to see how this moves forwards, you know, in the next month. I mean, obviously, session will be ending soon. But as of right now, you know, there's some good verbiage in there of, you know, how TDT funds can be used and the process for that. So I think that's good, that some of that is...
Wouldn't there be another caveat to that? You have to bring in an excess of $20 million a year in TDC funds?
That is correct.
To make it applicable?
That is correct. Which, I mean, we do, so...
Well, we've been trying, you know, to be able to use some of the TDT funds for roads and that sort of thing for, for as long as I can remember. So that would be actually a blessing to Walton County.
Well, and it would be defined. So, you know, sometimes it's so nebulous on, can we do this? Can we do that? Let's get an Attorney General opinion. And so I think this would help us and be able to say, okay, here it is. It's defined.
Okay.
And then just...
Anything else?
Yeah, just a couple more. So vacation rentals. You know, the state is looking at regulating vacation rentals from Tallahassee, which I think is a bad thing. I think that we need to regulate vacation rentals here locally and put a mandate on what our expectations are versus somebody sitting in Tallahassee doing that. So we'll see what that looks like as the session moves on. But I think that preempting local, you know, regulations is not a good thing. Trade secrets. This bill will repeal trade secrets revisions for agency under public records and establish new public record exemptions. You know, we don't really have trade secrets with our organization. Some bigger DMOS like, you know, Orlando and Miami, they do, but it's very competitive them in the convention business. So I can kind of understand where they're coming from, but that really doesn't apply to us. And lastly, this pertains to not only the TDC, but the county as well. But it is the Constitution Revision Commission, and I think we all know Amendment 95 and what that does for home rule. And as I understand it, that has died in committee. It's obviously something we need to watch and make sure it doesn't get revived.
It can come back up with a, with a simple majority vote.
Yes. It, it can.
It's, it's temporarily dead right now. Hopefully, it's...
Hopefully, it stays dead.
Death blow, but not necessarily. So we need to be vigilant about this.
Absolutely. Because that would challenge all of our legislative findings with the way we do things, that, our ordinances. That's very dangerous for us here locally.
Well, it's going to put us being judged by the same glasses as Miami-Dade and Orlando and Jacksonville.
Well, exactly. It's hard to hold an entire state to the same standard when what's good for one county is not necessarily good for another county.
Correct.
Jay, before you're through, I've been noticing some controversy or conversation about the VRBO. Can you give me in like five words or less? Yeah.
So VRBO has now come and redefined how they do business and how people show up in their listings. If you don't pay a fee, if somebody searches for you, and they go and book on, let me back up and explain this a little better. So if you were to go on to VRBO and look for a listing in Walton County, and then let's just say you went on to Revard Realty's website, and you booked a room there, VRBO can track you down and say, hey, we know you went and looked at our site, and then you went and booked direct here locally. They will penalize Revard for something like that. So they will charge them a fee, and then if you don't pay the fee, they'll bump you down in the listings. So they are taking off the entities' names and information for contacts, like websites, emails, phone numbers. So it, it's a real issue for us to deliver a good customer service to our clientele. And so we have a meeting scheduled next week on Thursday. So far, we have about 80 bed tax collectors coming to the meeting. So we're gonna have a good conversation on how we can work together, both them on their own, and then the TDC, and how we could possibly help them through marketing efforts. So I'll report back how that meeting goes at the next meeting, the next board meeting.
What time was that meeting? What time?
Um, bear with me one second. I don't recall.
I found his glasses again.
No, my phone, my schedule. It is at 2:00 here at the annex on Wednesday.
Any questions for, done? Okay, thank you, Jay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. Ms. Heather, I think you're up.
Yes, Chairman. The first item under legal is request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution.
Can y'all, hang on a minute, can you hear her out there? All right, get her closer.
This is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution with ballot language regarding Confederate flag referendum at the Walton County Courthouse. And just for the record, the title of the resolution is Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Walton County, Florida, providing for a countywide referendum to be placed on the ballot at the general election on November 6, 2018, for the purpose of determining whether a flag of the Confederacy shall be allowed to be displayed at the Walton County Courthouse property located in Defuniac Springs, Florida, providing for title, providing for referendum and ballot language, providing for certified copy to be transmitted to the supervisor of elections, and providing for severability. And that's it, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners, I believe you probably had the opportunity to read this. This is in response to the action that the board took a few months back concerning the Confederate flag that's presently flying in Defuniac. And the decision at that time was to put it on the ballot, let the people have an opportunity to voice their opinion one way or the other. As you can see on the second page of the referendum, the language of the, that would be put on the ballot, shall a Confederate flag or any version thereof be allowed to be displayed at the Walton County Courthouse property located in Defuniac Springs? And you vote for one, it's either yes or no. So that is what is, for us now, is to go ahead and approve the resolution so we can get this to Bobby, so it can be put on the ballot.
I'll make a motion to do so. I think it's very clear. I think it's easy for people to understand. I will make the motion to put it on the ballot.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Okay. Mr. McBroom, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Stephen McBroom. I'd like to thank y'all for giving the opportunity for this. I'd like to put it to bed all, all at once. We've had a lot of heartbreak, a lot of name-calling, conflicts, and I hope that this is a, I didn't understand if this was a binding resolution where it can be contested.
Well...
Yeah.
Heather, I think this is binding. If it comes back, it's, if it comes down, we'll take it down. Is that correct? Is that how you interpret what we...
What the voters decide is gonna be binding on this council.
Yeah, whatever the voters decide will be binding.
Okay, thank you. And, Miss, sir, we're gonna miss you, my family, and all of the friends. We love you, and we wish you good health. And hopefully, you'll mentor your replacement.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bowman, you still want to speak?
Yes, I have a question about the referendum in general. Okay, how can I put this? When I was a little kid, somebody told me it didn't matter who everybody on the island votes for, because there's more people in Defuniac than the entire population of the island down here. So basically, our vote doesn't count when it comes to things like voting for commissioners. Something I've never understood is why should the people of Defuniac get to vote on the commissioner that represents the island? And then why should my, why should I get to vote on who represents Defuniac? In the same way, you're talking about if the state of Florida regulates everything, then how can they compare our area to Miami-Dade, which is so different? Why, I, I just think that in the future, the referendum, when we vote on things like commissioners, only people from their own district should be able to vote on the commissioner that represents that district. Because if not, then you get into all kinds of corruption, like Defuniac ruling everything, because there's more people in Defuniac than there is everywhere else. And as far as the flag, you've already heard my opinion on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Ms. Heather?
Yes, Chairman. The next item under legal is request approval to terminate contract number 017-029, County Road 30A, resurfacing project phase three from County Road 83 to County Road 395 with Mid-South paving. At the January 9th BCC meeting, the board voted to award the contract to Mid-South paving in the amount of $834,710. Public Works Department has determined the project is not reasonably expected to be completed before spring break traffic begins. So that's the reason for the request for termination.
Okay.
Motion to approve request.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just would, would say that we will be, uh, re-advertising, getting this back out to bid in the effort to get it, get the work began immediately, or soon thereafter Labor Day of this year. So, we're not shelving the project, we're just delaying it a few months to get through the, the busy season, so we don't have one lane of traffic on Thirty-A for a period of time.
Okay. All right. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. All right. Commissioner Commander, I think you're up.
Not a thing.
Not a thing.
Mark it down.
Wait a minute.
Commissioner Nipper's not here right that day, will he? Commissioner Jones?
Uh, we're continuing with our strategic plan data gathering. We've done Kiwanis. We're going to go to Paxton School to do a government class, the Taxpayers Association, uh, First Friday Breakfast, the Small Business Association, the Rotary Club. Anyone else that you find that's interested? The West Florida Regional Planning Council is, uh, doing these sessions, and they use an interactive, um, method, which is really fun. You actually, um, they ask you a question, and you actually use your, your phone to key in something, and you see it on the screen, and a lot of dialogue, a lot of good ideas have come forth, so we will continue those. And the good news is the, um, House sponsor of six-thirty-one, which was the customary used bill, they, uh, they took that language out of the bill. So, right now, keep your fingers crossed, if, if you're on whichever side you're on, but that, you know, whichever side you're on, I personally think it should be local control, and it should be left up to the courts, so, to decide this. So, at any rate, that's been negated for right now. So, our, looks like our action did do some good when we went to Tallahassee. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yes, we've, uh, we've, we had a, uh, request from one of our constituents in Blue Mountain Beach, and, uh, Chance and I went down and looked at it, and, uh, Chance, would you come in here, please? Uh, I'd just like to request direction for, for staff to, uh, look in, to explore opportunities to, uh, do a little more, build a little, a few more, a little more sidewalks in, in the Blue Mountain area, where people cross the beach is not where they access the beach.
Right.
They cross the beach at that big curve, uh, past Sally's, and before the road straightens out. And, uh, although the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, I believe the people in that area will tell you very few people do twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, so what we'd like to do is see about moving the sidewalk. It's already partway built from, uh, that area down to Thirty-A, because you have a crossing there, and it's, it's a sidewalk there to the beach.
We'd be glad to look at it.
Okay.
See what improvements could reasonably be made.
Go ahead, Chance.
Could I mention one thing? Is, uh, uh, the, the site that, uh, where Nick's is, I don't know the name of the development that's proposed there. They've already got a DO. They did not have a sidewalk in their development order plans. I talked to them, and they've agreed to go ahead and build that section of sidewalk for us. And I believe at the next board meeting, uh, y'all will hear, uh, consideration for a development order on the northwest corner property there, uh, and, and they need to include a sidewalk in, in their development plan, I believe, as well, and that would help connect this whole system together for us.
All right. Thanks, Chance. All right. Uh, I have nothing specific. Uh, we've got two citizens' requests. Mike Thornton, Seagrove Baptist Church. Come on up, sir.
Mike Thornton, T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N. Uh, we are requesting approval, again this year, for the opportunity to do a community-wide free, uh, egg drop from a helicopter. We drop about two thousand, twenty-five hundred eggs. We'll also have some eggs on the ground, um, on, uh, March tenth, and, um, we, uh, last year, we had a very successful one, and thank you for the approval last year, uh, from the, uh, board, that, um, we had, uh, quite a few in attendance. Everything went well, no issues at all. The helicopter will come through. It's the same company we used last year that will come through from the, uh, west side and of the field, and, uh, parallel down the field, drop the eggs in the middle, and then they'll circle back around after, the first time it'll come through, and let, let us know that it's coming, basically, and then it'll drop the eggs, uh, on the field. Uh, the helicopter will be about a hundred feet in the air, um, maybe a little bit closer. Uh, I've also, uh, discussed with the, um, Outdoor Event, uh, Committee about a permit, and we just, I'm in, uh, contact with Sammy Sanchez of the South Walton Fire District as well to have, make sure that we're on site. Uh, we have a meeting next Wednesday to do an on-site, uh, view of the situation there, and making sure everything went well, and will go well for this year.
Okay.
Have you, uh, have you contacted Shane Sopp?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We've got approval from Shane.
Okay, there's no conflicting event there.
No, sir.
Now, is the soccer field plenty big enough to do that? I want...
Yes, sir.
I think, did y'all do it on the football field last year?
No, sir. We did it on the soccer field last year, and, uh, they even, uh, this year, allowed us to, to also line one side of the field and try to disperse the crowd a little more, uh, than we were behind the gate, uh, last year. And the problem there was a little bit of a bottleneck of getting everybody out once they actually hit the, the field. But we have the ropes across as well, uh, just as they did at the, uh, Driftwood Estates, uh, egg drop. I kinda went and spied on them after we did ours, and, uh, compared a little bit of how they did some things, because I wanted to make sure it's a safe, fun, family event. And like I said, we don't sell anything, we just let it all be free. We give away passes, uh, to Water Park and Destin and everything for a family to give away as well.
Okay.
We're gonna solemn prayer for all those chickens that gonna have to lay two thousand eggs.
That's right. Well, the neat thing about that is, uh, we, we buy them already stuffed from a, uh, company in, uh, Georgia...
Yeah.
...that allows handicap and retired veterans that may have been disabled, uh, they stuff the eggs, and that's a job for them, and also, we try to help that ministry and that company as well, so...
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
I might add that I went last year, and I'm never, I didn't know there was that many ki, many kids down here. It was so much fun. My grandson loved it. So, thank you for that service.
Thank you. We were very blessed last year.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we allow him to do this.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Moore, is this you?
Yes.
That don't surprise me.
(laughing).
More money.
You know what's coming, and I know what's coming. Lee Moore, thank you again, Commissioners. Uh, I am representing, again, the scenic corridor foundation, and, um, I think most, most of us are, are really happy with the landscaping that has been done by DOT out here on three-thirty-one. And as you know, we were involved in that project, and, um, we've also been working on, over the years, other segments of, of the corridor, Ninety-eight and Three-Thirty-One South. Um, and we just feel that because of, first of all, a desire to see more and more of this median landscaping, and second, of the timing of some FDOT projects, that we have an opportunity to get a great deal of this, uh, corridor landscape, um, in a, in, in this world of, of roadway and median landscaping projects, a fairly short amount of time. Um, so, we have put together this ten-year plan. Let me state this right off the bat. There is no definite requested or suggested marriage to ten years here, and we are well aware that it could very well take longer, uh, but we felt like it would be good to get a target on the wall and to begin to look at, at this, um, as a really good way to both improve, um, the aesthetics of the area and all the other benefits that come along with median landscaping for our current residents as, and, and second homeowners, as well as our tourists, enhancing this, this as a tourist destination further than it already is. So, we think it's very critical. Um, there are, when I mentioned there are some things in the works with the Department of Transportation, we're well aware of the land, of the roadway widening project happening in Inlet Beach. We've been told by FDOT representatives that they will, they will do a landscaping project after that, so we're probably three or so years away from that. That would take care of our other gateway to the west. Um, they've also said clearly, and we know logically, you can't do anything down there with those medians until they're done with that. So, that's one of the highest priorities, but it's temporarily on hold due to that project. But, but that's going to happen, and we're gonna be looking at the same scenarios we were out here on three-thirty-one. They'll be, um, looking to the county, um, to potentially agree to maintain it, and that, they'll enhance that project significantly if that happens, so we'll be back talking about that in a few years. Um, the, the, uh, other big focus right now is the third gateway down at the east end of Ninety-eight, and I'll come back to that in a moment, uh, but one of, Commissioner Anderson and Mr. Tusa and I recently met with, um, FDOT representatives from District Three, from our district, and we, we learned two things that I think were big takeaways during that meeting. One was that, um, you, you probably recall that last summer, you all agreed to submit a request to DOT for them to program funding into their budget for that eastern gateway. Um, what they shared with us is that, and they're considering projects for their next fiscal year this spring, um, they shared with us that if, if local jurisdictions have a plan, a landscape design funded and completed, it in significantly increases our chances of getting funding for the installation of a project. So, so that was one of the big things we took away from that, and I'll come back to that in a moment. Um, and the other thing they told us is they suggested that the county submit multiple projects of varying sizes. That project, just like this one, is large for, in the landscaping median world, that's a large project, significant dollars. So, um, so after that meeting, Mr. Tusa and I met, and we came up with, um, worked together on this prioritization that was provided in your packet on, on the map. And, um, so, that was one of the things we kept in mind. We wanted to have projects of varying sizes, and so, I wanted you to understand that. When I looked at this list, I was like, good lord, that's a lot of different projects, but I think that will help us, because, the reason they say that is because smaller pots of money become, may become available, uh, before larger pots of money do. So, if we have multiple projects on their radar, we can qualify for different opportunities, potentially. Um, and so, the three things that we're requesting today, uh, from you are, one, it, hopefully to get your support for this project, not necessarily to say the county will fund it over the next ten years, but that we're all on board with working together to, to pursue this and get it done in the future. Um, and two, that the county would submit requests for some of the smaller projects that are higher priority to DOT for consideration, so that we can get, um, increase our chances of getting more projects funded by them in the future. And then, three, um, we, we would love if you would agree to put out an RFP for the design for that east gateway, since it's such a high priority. It's the third of the three major gateways that are, you know, hopefully going to be done soon. Um, and, and that way, we will, as I said, increase our chances of them funding that project through their program that they funded this one through. And so, just to give you a, a, a general idea, we got high-level budget estimates on that project from two different landscape firms, and local landscape architect and a landscape firm. Um, one of them came in at forty-eight thousand, and one of them came in at twenty-five thousand. So, we think we're talking somewhere in that range, but we really won't know until if and when we get bids back on an RFP. So, to keep that moving along, that's the specific request for that particular project, and yes, I realize we're between budget cycles, but we just had this meeting with DOT in December and learned these things, so the last budget cycle was complete, and, um, this one hadn't, the come, upcoming one, well, probably is starting now, but hadn't started. So, um, so those are the three requests, and if you have input regarding the prioritization or the segmentation that we're proposing, we would love to get, hear that as well, if not tonight, then over time.
Lee, you're talking about the Rosemary Beach primary, the eastern gateway coming in?
Yes, it's project number four.
Right.
Basically, the county line to somewhere around Watersound Parkway is what we're thinking.
Well, I don't know if I wanna move forward at this time to say, yeah, let's go out for our FFP on this. We think we may have the funding to do the tunnel underneath there at that intersection, and I don't wanna go out there and put a bunch of stuff in, or go to the, and then we get the money, and then go out there and tear everything up again. It's just like the west end. So, I don't know if this is something we wanna address tonight, or wait and let's see what happens after the legislature meets, to see if we've got the funding for that project, and maybe, uh, have to figure out how long that's gonna take, and whether we need to start immediately on the landscaping, or wait until we get through with that project to come back in.
How far are they going to, uh, extend the, the expanded lanes?
Um, in where...
Are they gonna do that in Inlet Beach also eventually?
Oh, you're talking about the widening of the rest of US Ninety-eight. That's, that's another reason why we feel like this full project, the whole corridor, is potentially, things can change, but there are some good possibilities, because the, um, DOT has programmed a project to start PDNE, we were talking about that earlier, on, um, widening US Ninety-eight from Thirty-A West down to the Bay County line. And that has always been, until the last year or so, that has been much further out on the trajectory. The current DOT administration is moving that up, um, in the priority list. So, there, that's years and years away, clearly. I think they're slated to start that PDNE twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, somewhere around in that range, and so, that's just the initial design, so you're talking years until actual, anything changes on the ground.
Yeah, but still, if, if they go forward with, uh, widening it all the way down to Bay County, and we, four years before that, spent one and a half million dollars landscaping, they go in there and tear it all out, we're behind the eight ball.
Well, we had that very conversation with DOT, and they felt like if we can get this landscaping done anytime soon, that it'll be far enough out. They said basically, don't wait. That's, and Commissioner Anderson can confirm that, because we had that very same concern. And I would almost say the same thing about the underpass. I didn't mean to skip over your question about that. Um, first of all, it, it would only affect the landscaping right in that specific area around the intersection, so I could see us doing on either side of it, potentially. And, um, you probably know better than I do the chances of that funding coming through and that construction happening anytime real soon, but I'd hate to put off the whole project if we're still years away from that underpass.
We're only talking about less than four weeks before the session's over with, and we'll probably know in a couple of weeks if those still stayed within the budget, concerning the money.
Yeah.
I don't think two weeks is gonna kill anybody, or something that's taken years to eventually build out.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't think so either, but I also know that the governor can veto it in May or June, whenever he's looking at the bill, so if we're, we, that's I think what might have happened last year, but it got vetoed very late in the process. So, um, I get the point. I, I just worry about putting it off, and then we ended up putting it off a whole lot longer. Um, but, but we're gonna fall in DOT's cycle, whatever year this happens. We're always anxious to get things moving, um, but their, their fiscal year's July one, as you know, so if we miss this spring's prioritization process, we'll fall into next year's, and we'll know more by then, but we'd love to have, we'd love to have a, a design in place for whenever that opportunity does come up, so...
Mr. Chairman, and, and I certainly agree with everything that, that Lee wants, you know, for the most part. Um, but as she even stated herself, we have adopted a budget, and where do we start piecemealing our, our budget? I mean, we have, this is a, this is a wonderful project, but we have roads that need to be built, stormwater needs to be taken care of, and sports parks that need to be built. Um, I think we need to maybe take a step back and take a look at our funding and see if, if we can help with, with, you know?
Well, and I think, I think Lee's aware of that. We had this conversation in my office, because I went, my god, Lee, it's not, it wasn't in our budget.
Yeah.
And so, she's aware of that, and, and there may be a place we can find some money, Lee, but it may have to wait till next year's budget.
Look, I get it. I absolutely get it.
Yeah, let's, let us look and see. Uh, I, I'm kinda like, uh, the chairman. I, I would like to wait at least a little bit, and let's see if we even, even make the budget. Uh, we had very productive talks with, with, uh, Senator Gaynor and Representative Drake, and I know that's a really big project for you also.
Absolutely.
So, let's wait a couple of weeks, and let us, uh, Mr. Jones, if you would get with, with finance and see if there is, you know, extra money, and, you know, I don't know, we're on a really, really, really tight budget.
I, I can tell you, there may be some funds that ain't extra.
Yeah.
We make sure of that.
I know.
But, but I wouldn't...
And I think, I think Lee, Lee understands that.
I know she does. We've had this conversation many times.
Absolutely.
But I will tell you that, if you recall, the, uh, legislative session started much earlier this year, so the June-July timeframe for the governor to sign bills or veto bills will be moved up, because I think he only has three weeks, maybe after end of session, or somewhere around there. So, that, that will, you, you won't see those things happen in June and July this year. I think more like March and April.
Well, that would be great, and the only thing I'd suggest, because we're actually right into budget season almost here, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking the activity's already starting on that for next year for the county. Um, so, I would just request that this, and I'll be reminding, but that this be on the radar, if, if can't find funds for this year, for, to, to kinda get it in, um, for next year's budget cycle, because I think to be able to spend less than fifty thousand dollars on a design, to leverage that, to maybe get us a whole lot more money in the install, um, would be, you know, beneficial in the long run.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Lee.
Mr. Chapman, Commissioner Chapman, can I just request too for consideration for submitting some of these smaller projects to DOT for their landscaping funds consideration? Because we might even get prioritized for some of these smaller projects because they're significantly less.
Does the board have to submit that on behalf of the board? What's the board want to do?
I make the motion we do that.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Thank you. I find it really distressing that our state forests are made up almost entirely of short needle pines now. Now, I know there's this project about long needle restoration, but.
We're not talking about long needle, hang on. We're talking about.
You're using my time. Medians, right.
Listen, you direct your comments to what Ms. Moore was talking about concerning the landscaping on ninety-eight.
Okay.
Don't go out in the forest, we ain't there.
Well, where do you think they're getting the trees from?
I have no idea, Ms. Bowman. Don't care.
They're getting them from the forest and you don't care because you don't care about this land and that's the problem.
You're, Ms. Bowman, have a seat.
Wait, I want to talk about the trees and the median are coming out of the forest and now you're going to have your dogs beat the crap out of you.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, motion carries.
For clarity, so do we want to take the list and just meet with Lee and look at the ones that make sense to move forward?
Right.
Okay, we'll get a time to sit down with you, Lee. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, we take a break.
We're going to take about a fifteen-minute break and we'll come back, finish up the agenda. Okay, we've got three of us. Come back to order, please. We still need to finish up the public comment section. Does anyone else have any public comment about any topic? Ms. Bowman, you've already spoke, thank you. Ms. Bowman.
No, not on the public comment. That was on the trees and the median.
All right, go ahead.
Koi Bowman, B O W M A N. Yeah, my neighborhood is moving around. It's not just the garbage truck that causes earthquakes, it's all the big truck traffic on Chat Holly and it wasn't always like this. Not before a year and two months ago during the dump truck invasion of December two thousand sixteen, when I spoke to you on the phone, Tony Anderson, and I asked you to put seismographs down Chat Holly and you said.
Ms. Bowman, Ms. Bowman.
You said seismic, what? Okay, so.
Calm down.
I have also spent the.
We're not in a kindergarten classroom and you're not going to speak to us like that.
I have also spent the last year and two months of my life. Being electrocuted, irradiated, and ionized with non-ionizing radiation. God only knows what. And the fact that I should have to come in here and wait till the end of the meeting to complain about the fact that you're killing me is very despotism. And then, that I should have to play twenty questions about how are you killing me? Are you microwave cracking? Are you acoustic logging? Are you just electrocuting the ground? I don't know, but that there is tyranny in itself that you are going to play dumb monkey, see nothing, say nothing, know nothing.
Ms. Bowman, Ms. Bowman. You get your comments in line with proper decor or you'll be leaving here. You understand me?
Whoever sold you these machines lied to you. They told you that they make a sound that only Indians can hear. And how convenient is that in a state of Florida where they made it illegal to be an Indian a long time ago? But guess what? All of these machines are causing all of our problems like cancer and mutated babies. And I would like to know where this is.
You're out, you're out of order.
Okay?
Sit down or leave. One of us two.
I am not, I am not making that sound.
Leave.
We are being exposed to radiation.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to move into.
Just a second. For the record, Ms. Bowman has never spoken to me. She's left voice messages for me that were pretty much like what you just saw. But I have never spoken to Ms. Bowman. She has gone up and threatened my daughter at her place of work and she's been banned from there. So, for the record, I haven't spoken to her and these are the type voicemails that she leaves us.
Okay. All right, with that being said, we'll move into the planning and development. Mr. Carpenter, item number one, or twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first four items we have tonight are legislative items. The first one being the farmer's market ordinance adoption hearings. This is a request to approve an ordinance to establish a process for regulated farmer's markets as temporary uses within the Walton County scenic corridors. And Vivian Schammel reviewed this project. I'll ask her to introduce it further.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you, Mac. I don't really have too much to add to the introduction that Mac just made. This is a request to approve an ordinance to allow for farmer's markets to be regulated on the Walton County scenic corridors ninety-eight, three thirty-one, and thirty-eight only. And they will be going through the outdoor event process.
Okay, is any public comment? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Good motion, in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, motion carries. Number twenty-three, Mac.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to the LDC Chapter Seven Tourist Oriented Development Signs Amendment. This is the first reading. This is a request to approve by ordinance in Amendment Chapter Seven of the Land Development Code to provide the opportunity to participate in the FDOT Tourist Oriented Directional Sign Program. This program would allow certain directional signs on state right-of-ways outside of our three designated scenic corridors in Walton County. And it'll meet the requirements of Florida Administrative Code fourteen-five-one-zero-six-one. This request was initially initiated by the Windswept Golf Course on Highway twenty as a means to promote that particular entity in our county. And it would likely result in directional signs probably on Highway twenty and Highway eighty-one. And they would be acquired at their cost and installed consistent with DOT guidelines.
Okay, any question?
Second.
We got a motion in a second to approve. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, motion carries. Number twenty-four.
Thanks, sir. This is the Pando Small Scale Amendment Request to Approve by Ordinance. It's been reviewed by Vivian Schammel. The application submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of the parcel owner. They're requesting to amend the future land use designation from Conservation Residential two-to-one to Low Density Residential on approximately two-point-five acres. It's located on the north side of Michaela Lane off of South Dino Drive and identified by the parcel number in your package. The applicant is present and is prepared to present their application.
Okay. Who's going to speak on y'all's behalf? You are?
Yeah, Melissa Ward with Dunlap and Chipman for the Pando Small Scale Amendment. And with me is Scott Jenkins of Jenkins Engineering. And the Pandos are also here if it's necessary, if you want to ask them any questions. I did a PowerPoint and I have, I'm going to go ahead and hand these to you just in case the PowerPoint didn't work, I brought some copies. And in the interest of time, because you're moving rather, moving along rather nicely, the Pando Small Scale Amendment is on a two-and-a-half acre piece of property that's currently designated Conservation Residential. A little bit of personal history of the property is it is owned, but has been owned and in the family since nineteen-seventy-eight. And at the time, in the early two thousands, when they had considered looking at it for development, it was adjacent to a piece of property also designated Conservation Residential, but was developed at around eight units to the acre. So they thought they had the same density. So I just wanted to put that out there so we can understand the history as we go through it. And I'll try to speed this along because you're moving rather quickly tonight. The, as you know, legislative and legislative small-scale amendments are not a regulatory hearing but a policymaking hearing. And what that, what that bases that on is that you get to make the decision on how the development of Walton County proceeds. The property, back in nineteen-eighty-five, had a, had a quote zoning district of a development or resort which allowed twenty units to the acre. Nineteen-ninety-six, they adopted a comprehensive plan, but in that comprehensive plan, they had the GIS maps that they adopted and they had the MPA maps that they supplemented that with. The GIS map called it out as infill and the, some of the property is infill. And then this property on the MPA maps was called out as Conservation Residential two-to-one. Now, as time has progressed, as you can see on the, on the slide there, all around it has changed in its land use designation from Conservation Residential either to infill pre-two-thousand-eleven and then post-two-thousand-eleven to Low Density Residential. The average density of development in this area is four units to the acre. And largely that is because on the north side of that is a non-residential land use category and it's being, it'll continue to develop out. To the west is Gulf Place, which as you know, is developed out at twelve units to the acre. The property has, and we have a visual display, if, you know, towards the end, has developed over the years to infill in Low Density Residential in a series of two-and-a-half acre tracts for the most part. Ms. Pando's property is the last piece of property of two-and-a-half acres to change from Conservation Residential to a higher density. In two thousand and four, there was a development called Shadow Pines that developed to the south of Ms. Pando's property. It was developed at eight units per acre. And part of the reason that it still says Conservation Residential is because when it was presented, the person who, at the county, who made the interpretation of what the land use category was, used a GIS map which called it infill and had not cross-referenced it with the MPA maps. So the discretion was upon the county at that time. And there is a, in the minutes, it clearly states, Mr. Hammond stated that the county had had a longstanding policy that if there was a discrepancy between the two maps, that the highest and best use was attributed to that property of the owner. So it was given and approved at an infill density because that, that was the discrepancy on the county's maps. The future land use history is shown in this display indicates what has happened, what the county's policymakers have been making over the last twenty years. We've adopted land use maps to give us some idea, but all along the way, the small-scale amendments, starting in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, and on, there are twelve different amendments that have, or changes in our system that have shown that the policymakers of Walton County have consistently increased the density in the area to allow for better development on that, on those pieces of property, largely because the land use category of Conservation Residential is intended for properties that are encumbered by wetlands, flood zones, and habitat to be preserved. These properties do not have those signifiers. And Ms. Pando's property does not have these signifiers. It's not in flood zone, doesn't have wetlands, and doesn't have a habitat that requires preservation. When you're looking at how a land use amendment is to be approved, there is a, there's a section, our policy in the comprehensive plan, Policy L dash one point thirteen point three. And the way that I, that we've reviewed as to what it, how you have to look at it, there is a section, there's a, the first part of that section says, if it is going to disrupt habitat, if it's going to create increased densities in flood plains, if it's going to increase densities in coastal high hazard or wetlands, then you should not approve it. So we don't qualify for that. What we qualify is the next section that says, if it is for consistent development, if it is going to show that we have a development pattern in place, then those are the reasons that you do approve it. So my diagram there is to indicate that we are moving forward consistently with the neighborhood of improving the area and improving the infrastructure by increasing the density enough to allow people to utilize the property properly. So it falls under the same category and meets the comprehensive plan requirement for a land use amendment. Conservation Residential is a land use category that has some, is strongly limited because not only does it only allow for single-family homes, it does allow for clustering, but it requires, in conjunction with that, a sixty percent open space. Two-and-a-half acres is not enough land to have development and sixty percent open space. And the primary purpose in most of the land use amendments in that particular area is because they couldn't, they could not develop with sixty percent open space. So they created these land use amendments in order to be able to have a higher density so that they could put on the property what they needed to. They still have buffers, there's compatibility buffers required during development stage. They still have landscaping required and native vegetation, if possible, preserved. All those things apply, but the sixty percent open space is not the encumbering factor. During the Planning Commission meeting, some neighbors came in to express their concerns. I've listed them. I don't know that you want me to go through them all right now. You, you're moving. So you can read them if you want. And for the purposes of compatibility, the neighborhood, as I said earlier, is developing out at four units per acre. And the proposal, the conceptual proposal that, that they will show you in a little bit is actually just under four units per acre, so that it's not even at the highest capacity. And then I have some slides on the abutting property. To the west is a development called Spyglass Hill. And to the south is the development of Shadow Pines, which was approved at a density of, well, I think it's closer to six or seven units per acre once you cut out the roads and some of it. And in conclusion, I'll speed this along quickly, is that the property is ripe for a land use amendment. It is surrounded by developed property and land uses that are twice or more the density than what's allowed on this piece of property. It does not have the characteristics of a Conservation Residential land use. It's not in a flood plain, doesn't have any wetlands, and it doesn't have any habitat preservation requirements. And it, the property, it's not as if somebody was bought the piece of property and decided to change it and she's had it for forty years and she thought she had the density that she had that was to the south of her. So we're just requiring, requesting that this amendment be passed so that she can come back to you, or come back to the county rather, with a development plan compatible to the neighborhood and in compliance with the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to say anything?
Just, just real quickly, and I'll try to keep it short also. Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. Just a couple of things. One of, one of the issues that came up at the Planning Commission was talking about what potentially would go on the property. We actually have a concept here, I wonder if you can see that, but it's basically for nine single-family lots. Some of the concerns were from the adjacent property owners with buffering, so we add an additional fifty feet of buffer on that side and thirty feet on the south to try to address some of those concerns. It is a fairly simple street board project that fits in with most of the other things. We've done several other projects in the year and it's very similar to that. The only other thing that I wanted to point out is really just, this is the original map. And from what we heard at the Planning Commission, the concern was that they didn't feel like changing the map was the appropriate thing to do. This original map, this Pando's property is here in the red area. The rest of this brown area was all Conservation Residential at one time. And I'm only going to do this because I cut these out today, so I don't waste the paper and time. But basically, all of these properties have been changed over time. That piece of property was changed at infill. This piece of property was changed at Low Density Residential, which is the same as what Ms. Pando's requesting. This piece of property was changed at infill. This piece of property was changed to, was developed at infill criteria as Melissa stated, the Shadow Pines, that was infill. This was changed to Low Density Residential. Infill. Infill.
I have it up to one.
Low-density residential. This is Ms. Pando's piece. Village mixed use, and neighborhood commercial. So, based on that, you can see over the years, Ms. Pando is the last piece, basically, that's Conservation Residential, and this clearly shows the pattern of development that we're talking about. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about this.
My question's for Mac. This was before us a year or so ago, right?
Yes, sir.
And we denied it. Refresh my memory as to why we denied it, and my question to Scott and Ms. Ward is, what has changed from a year ago to today concerning this project? Mac?
This did come before you, just a little over a year ago, and it was denied, I believe it was three to two. There was concern about compatibility at the time, and there was a discussion of, we're changing lots of properties. As Scott has demonstrated, this neighborhood has been changing for the last 20 years. We believe that it is a reasonably orderly progression of development in this particular And they have followed the process. They did have to wait for 12 months because the Land Development Code specifies waiting for 12 months when a land use change has been turned down.
Okay. Scott, follow up with you, what's changed from a year ago?
Basically, what you see here, Ms. Pando's request is for low-density residential. There are three adjacent parcels that are all two-and-a-half acres, very similar to this, this one, this one, and the one on this side, which actually changed from infill to low-density residential, that have all been approved since that request was made and denied by this board. So it shows that in the other areas, you guys have agreed that that is the appropriate land use for that.
Okay, all right. I think I got some appearance cards here for this one. Fred Tricker, Mr. Tricker, is that right, Tricker?
That's it.
Okay. And Mike Hewitt, you're in the well, you'll be next.
Hey, I've got a handout here I'd like to have included in the record. If that's okay. Does anybody else need a copy of it? Keep one, keep one for myself. All right, thank you, Commissioners. I'm here to, representing the South Walton Community Council, and we got some concerns about this project, so we're in opposition. And your remarks a few minutes ago, Mr. Chapman, were right on, really, nothing's changed. The project did become before the Planning Commission in October 2016. It was denied three to two. It went to the BCC, October 2016, was denied three to two, and the Planning Commission meeting they had in January, for some reason, got approved by a vote of four to one. I don't know why. It doesn't make sense. I just want to note that when it was denied in 2016, two of the Commissioners that voted to deny are sitting on the current board. So I don't know if that has an impact or not. But the reasons for denial are just as valid today as they were back in 2016. First of all, they're asking for a doubling of density on a property that's owned for five homes, they want to put in 10 dwellings. Also, Conservation Residential land does have a limit on the amount of property that you can clear. You can only clear 40% of the property for the dwelling and other associated requirements around the house. So want to move it to Low Density Residential, which has no requirement regarding clearing that I'm aware of. So basically, you're putting in twice as many homes, and there's no preservation of land. Well, the Conservation Residential, future land use, is there for the preservation, conservation of the natural resources. That's what it's there for. And I'm not aware, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not aware of anything that would keep the developer from just clearing the entire five acres under the Low Density Residential. So it's not just density, it's also preservation of land, and maybe that's just as important. The density that they're proposing is higher than neighboring properties. I'm sorry, I didn't know I had a time limit.
Yes, legislative, there is a time limit on these types of things, but go ahead and give, have another minute to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. If I can do it in a minute. Anyway, this relates to property values. In your packet, you've got comments from a neighbor, at least one neighbor, that said that he objects to it. When he bought the property, he bought it on the basis that this property would be two units to the acre, and so his property values have been diminished. So that may or may not be true, it kind of makes sense, but what I'd like to know is if the developer or the petitioner has come up with any kind of appraisal to support that, because that doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Mr. Tricker, let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
To the, I assume that's oriented, to the northwest corner of that proposed site, there's two parcels there that have already been changed to
Right.
Low density.
Right.
And there's others that have also, I'm just wondering, where was the council whenever these other projects were up here?
Well, that's my next question.
And they didn't say nothing about putting 12, or 14, or 16 in a particular area, and now somebody's wanting to go from five to 10, and...
Well, that's the justification that was given at one of the previous meetings, was that we've already given that to other people, other properties, so we want the same treatment. Well, that's not justification, in my opinion, for going against what's in the comprehensive plan, Land Development Code. If you're not going to hold people to those standards, there's no point in having the standards, might as well just get rid of them. And so that's the objection. And we keep improving more and more density, we're going to end up with the kind of mess we're in right now, where we've got too many people and not enough space.
Okay.
So it's important.
Is your house in that neighborhood?
No, it is not. No, but we are, South Walton Community Council here is to represent the neighborhood and the people that have objected, who feel, by the way, that they have been disrespected, they don't get any satisfaction when they come before you and speak about these issues. And it seems like we're favoring one side versus the other. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Hewitt?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Hewitt, and I am an adjacent landowner.
Can you identify where you are?
I'm this piece of property right here.
Okay.
So you are on a piece of property that was changed, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, that's correct. It was a low-density residential.
So his property is to the east?
Yes, sir, my property is directly to the east, it's the exact same parcel land, it's 2.5 acres, and it's owned Low Density Residential. And I'd like to try to answer some of the questions, what's changed? Last year, when Ms. Pando and I approached this board, a very valid concern was traffic flow by some of the neighbors. Another concern was preservation. So what's changed? Well, the county has since allocated the funds to pave Seacroft from 393 over to where we will extend a road north, 300 feet, which will create a second access point throughout all of Shadow Pines, Gulf Place Retreat, Santa Rosa Retreat. There will now be a second form of access via Blacktop Asphalt Road. That's a huge change, so to answer the question, what has changed? That's far and away the biggest concern. Now, I reached out to some of my adjoining neighbors to address their concerns. It makes me feel pretty good that the opposition apparently isn't here tonight that typically comes, because I've spent the time communicating with many of them since the Planning Commission, and I've put their mind at ease. So we're not going to build 10 homes, we're going to build nine. We want to go from Conservation Residential to LDR. And I think it's very important to people to take the time to think about what we're asking to change it to. The very definition of LDR is Low Density Residential, not High Density Residential, not MPA infill, not multifamily. We want to change it to Low Density Residential, okay? Traffic, number one, I just addressed it. When I talked about that to some of the people, and I said, "We're going to take a considerable amount of this traffic off of your roads, out through your neighborhoods," they weren't aware of that. We're going to. And I'm on record with the county and staff saying that that's what I'm going to do, and I'm going to pay for it. I'm going to extend our asphalt road up to where it intersects with Seacroft, giving a second form of access to the point. What's changed, Ms. Chapman? That's a huge, that was the number-one concern. Density, we're going to build nine homes, not 10, but in order to do that, we need to ask for LDR.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Preservation, the main family that had opposition to us, that live in Spyglass, that live in the neighborhood directly to the west of Ms. Pando's property, that abuts Ms. Pando's property, the developer that did their project, Mr. Bill Abbott, he chose to leave their preservation all to the backyards of those homes. Interestingly enough, the very family that had the little campaign of opposition, because they didn't know all the facts, they are currently residing in a piece of property that went from Conservation Residential to LDR. They were unaware of that. But now they're living in a home, and they don't understand it, so I pointed that out to them. They went through the same very process, but they have a 100-foot buffer in their backyard. I'm working with Scott Jenkins, and we're designing something in conjunction, as a result of the meetings with some of the homeowners, that we're going to leave an additional 50 feet as a buffer on our side. So who in this room?
The east side or the west side?
We're going to leave it on the west side of our property, which abuts the east side of their property. The concern, you know, was preservation. So first, I want to point out that they have a 100-foot buffer in their backyard, which is very rare in South Walton County. Being reasonable, as the staff will tell you I am, we're going to design in such a way there's additional 50 feet, that's 150-foot buffer. Who in South Walton has 150-foot preservation buffer between you and your neighbors? That's when communication puts out there, and people work together, that's what you can come up with.
Well, Mike, I want to ask a question now. That's what you're doing on the west side of that site, and you own the property on the east side.
I do.
And I assume at some point in time, you're going to develop that.
Yes, sir, it's already been developed, yes, sir.
Oh, it has?
Yes, sir.
I can't tell for that.
And it's LDR as well.
Okay.
Low Density Residential as well.
And what's the buffer going to be on the east property line, between there and your...
It's already approved, it came before this commission, you know, you guys approved the development, or the percentage, I don't know, but certainly it has preservation as well. And if you go back, you'll see that I, again, worked with staff and any other concerned citizens that came up here to put the preservation to where it would be most beneficial, okay?
Scott, do you want to...
I'm sorry, I did the project for Mike over here also. There's actually a road in between the two properties, which is about 30 feet of buffer area, between the road and where this property is.
Okay, thank you.
So what's changed, Ms. Chapman? Just to answer your question, traffic. The fact that I got together and spoke with the concerned citizens, addressed them, gave them some input, and we're designing it accordingly, to give them some input, once they've understood what was being done, I think it eased their concern substantially. There was miscommunication out there that someone was going to come in and build 40, 40-something houses, you know, and understandably, I would not want that as well. So, you know, these are the points that I wanted to bring up on our behalf, I think it's a very reasonable request.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comments? Come forward, sir, please identify yourself to the clerk.
Graham Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-S, husband of the applicant, Ms. Pando. I was at the meeting where it got turned down, the county commissioners' meeting in October, and Susan had just got into the initiation of the project without any background information on zoning and all those sorts of complicated issues. At the meeting, the people who opposed it primarily had a spreadsheet that displayed numbers, and it becomes complicated, and we don't, that inflated the effect of doing LDR instead of Conservation Residential. Some of the numbers suggested densities that in fact were not correct, and it made it sound like this was going to have a dramatic impact. She spoke, there was a little to and fro amongst the commissioners, and then the engineer at the time, who's different than Scott Jenkins, got up and said, "Well, we might do, you know, something less than 10 homes." And at that point, it just got kind of nebulous, and there was a, and it got turned down, and it was primarily based upon her opposition, which, in my estimation and in us researching it, was faulty in terms of the numbers that she was using. Looking through the minutes, I don't know how you guys keep track of this stuff, I was, went back to the Planning Committee and the County Commission for the two adjacent lots, the one that is Spyglass Hill 2, it's kitty-corner to the people who are opposing it, and... Is that orange, Matt, for him? The one with the lots that color? These two lots, Spyglass Hill 2, these are the people opposing it, there's the property we're requesting to be ended. January, Planning Commission, no public comment, unanimous. February, this is 2016, and we didn't know in October, and you guys can't keep track of every single amendment that comes up with timing, that that was approved with no public comment, unanimous, by the County Commissioner. That was January, February, March, this came up, Conservation Residential, Low Density Residential, Planning Commission unanimous approval, and April, County Commissioners unanimous approval. No public comment at any of those four meetings. What has changed? The only thing that I can see that has changed is that the people who are opposing it live right there, and this is in their backyard, and they would like to control what's going on in their backyard, and that's not fair. My perception, but you guys make the decision.
All right, thank you, sir.
One last thing, Mr. Hewitt has, I just drove by today, I hadn't been here since last summer, he's developed his property beautifully, he's got, the other lot, he's sold nine of 10, and he has 10 with a road on it, and this would be a mirror image, and it would look really attractive in the community.
Sir, go back to the map, please. When you're saying, okay, point to the area that they're opposing it, the people?
That they live right there.
Just one person?
That's the husband and wife.
Okay. Is that in their backyard?
We are, they have, this is Conservation, 100 feet.
Okay.
They have a fence right on the surveyor's line, we walked it today, and they have two gates leading on to the Pando property, but it's right in their backyard, they have a fence here right on the property line.
And Scott, you all have added an additional 50 feet to that?
Yes, sir, 50 feet along this property line.
So that gives them 150 feet, and they have a fence, too.
And just for clarity, we actually did this project for Mr. Abbott, whatever he did a couple of years back, and the reason that he has this preservation in the back was, at the time when he bought this property, really didn't want to put any infrastructure in, just to save cost, and so he wanted to use this road, which was already existing, and to make some improvements for him, but didn't want to put in a lot of infrastructure, so he did, and that's the reason that his lots are oriented that way, so that he can front off that roadway, and he had some preservation requirements that he could have bought out, he just really didn't feel like he needed to spend the money to do that, so he placed it all in the back.
So he's got a fence on the property line, they've got...
Right on the property line.
Okay, and he's got a gate opening into your property.
It does, yes. Mike Hewitt has done this, this is McHale Lane, the road is already paved right to there. The mic's got down the center, looks beautiful, some drainage here, five lots in each. lots on each side. He developed this, and he has, uh, sold nine out of the 10. And this is going to be the scene that would be really nice, because these are going to come together, the houses on each side, and this will be paved right up to Seacross.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Anybody else wish to speak? Come forward, ma'am. Identify yourself to the clerk.
Yes, thank you very much. And I'm Susan Pondo, and, um, this is my property. And I just want to tell you what has changed. Um, I've owned this property with my parents for 40 years. So I was 24-years-old when we bought it. My father was a, uh, forester with the state of Florida, and he worked all in this area. And, um, I grew up in the Panhandle, and I spent my whole life coming to the beach in the Panhandle. So in 1996, when, uh, the land usage came in, we really didn't know about it. And the owners were not directly notified. And by that, it was published in the newspaper, but no letters were sent out. My father was retired at that time, so, um, he must have missed it in the newspaper. And then in 2005, we, uh, came down to walk the property, and that was when, um, this property was being developed. And we were like, "Oh, wow." So things are, something's finally happened, and we got all excited. And my dad checked and found out that we were the same density as that property there off of McHale Lane, which is true. Um, and so at that time, we decided we were going to go ahead and build the beach house that we wanted and develop the rest of it. And that was 2005. And then my father died in 2006, suddenly of a heart attack. So that got derailed, and I spent the next eight years taking care of my mother. And my mother died of 2014 in March, and my son and daughter, they were both in their 30s. We were taking care of my mother's affairs, and we were like, "Okay, now we're going to build this beach house," you know? And then six months after my mother died, I got the worst phone call of my life, that my 34-year-old son was found dead. He was house-sitting for a friend's mom, and, and he was found dead, and it was an undetermined cause of death. And what's changed is me since that phone call. Uh, and a few months after my son died, the owner of this property contacted me, um, and that was before Mr. Hewitt bought it. And, uh, and he was interested in selling his property, but he didn't have, um, he didn't think he had easement for, um, a road. And so that's why he contacted me. And my daughter and I came and met with him, and, uh, he said, "You're co, you're two-to-one." And I said, "No, I'm not. I'm eight-to-one." And he was like, "No, you, you're two-to-one." And I said, "No, I'm not. I'm eight-to-one." That's, my father was a forester with the state of Florida. That was his calling, that's what he did. And that's what my father, my father always, always said. And, um, so I met with Vivian and found out that I was, um, in fact, two-to-one. And I was in this panic. My son had just died, my mother had just died, and I was like, "I have got to get this done." And so I rushed into, um, this process before, and I have to say that I was not prepared. And I, I didn't know Scott at that time, and so I had a different engineer, and I wasn't prepared. He wasn't prepared, and we came before you, and we were fumbling around, and the, the neighbors that protested, they were, they were very, um, good at it. So that's what's changed, is that I've taken time and I've, um, done a lot of research. And, um, so I'm only asking to be not more, but I also don't want to be less than all of the neighbors around me. Everybody started at Conservation, two-to-one, and everyone has changed through the years. Um, but me, and I certainly would have done it sooner had I known about it, because it's not easy now, I know. But that's what's changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number 25, Mac.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is the Nissia Small Scale Amendment, requested approved by ordinance. It has been reviewed by Bob Barante. This is a small-scale amendment submitted by Darryl Barnhill on behalf of Dirt Investments, requesting approval to change the future land use designation from Conservation Residential two-to-one to Light Industrial on approximately 9.75 acres. Uh, this project's located about four-tenths of a mile south of US 98 on South County Road 393, and is identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, you may recognize this parcel as the parcel immediately north of the stables that are on South 393, uh, presently occupied by a landscaping company. It's been significantly disturbed. It's got some wetlands, um, and they're asking for Conser, or Light Industrial, the parcel immediately across the street, uh, is Light Industrial also. So we do have some, uh, adjacency of Light Industrial. Uh, the applicant's here, uh, to present their case.
All right.
Tom Palti, uh, the applicant, uh, was unanimously approved by the planning commission, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Seems to be, we believe it to be a logical progression of planning in that area.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Any public comment? CNN, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think, um, the next two items are QJ, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Miss Heather?
Okay. Anybody that anticipates testifying on any of these matters coming up, would you please rise, raise your right hand? Let me swear you in. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Uh, has any member of the commission had any discussions that would prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision on any of the upcoming matters?
No. Okay, uh-
And I filed.
Oh, you filed our expertise. You have the reports in, okay.
Okay. When you come up to testify, identify yourself and advise the clerk if you've been sworn or not. Thank you. Mac?
Yes, sir. Uh, the name of this proposed development is The Southern. Uh, it's a request approved by final order. Uh, this major development's been reviewed by Bob Barante. Um, it's submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of Walton County Holdings, LLC. They're requesting approval to develop a new apartment complex with 76 units, uh, some common area, and a 1,000-square-foot office space on just under 10 acres with the future land use of Town Center One. Uh, and this would be the second development, bringing housing to our town center, uh, in South County in Santa Rosa Beach. Uh, property's located on J.D. Miller Road North, uh, on the west side, is identified by the parcel number in your packet. Uh, we'd like to request the staff report to be entered into evidence.
So moved.
And the applicant is here to, uh, present their case.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. Jamie Eubanks, E-U-B-A-N-K-S, and I have been sworn in. Uh, Mac obviously touched on the details of the project. I'll just mention a few highlights, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Um, 76 units on about 10 acres. Think it's a nice example of the Town Center One planning. It features a trail that actually heads back to the rear of the site. There's a little isolated upland packet of land, uh, there at the rear. There's going to be about a 1.25 acre and a quarter, uh, community park open to the You know, in, in addition, we do meet the stormwater permits. We actually retain 100, excuse me, attenuate the 100-year storm event. Just an example of workforce housing in this area, previously you approved about 72 units, about 300 feet south of this, on the other side of the road. This one's 76 units. Um, and with that, I'll just be happy to take any questions you may have.
Well, my one question is looking at the staff report where it says wetlands. Um, the way they got it marked out here, there's a significant amount of that property that is wet. How are you going to accommodate a structure and maintain your stormwater concern?
You are correct, Commissioner Chapman. And actually, the nice thing about this project and the developer in particular, is there's about 4.22 acres of wetlands on this side, I believe, and they are only impacting about 10% of those wetlands. So the actual wetlands on the site, you can kind of see from the hatch line, uh, I don't know if you can see it there. So actually, the uplands portion, most of the site, this is primarily uplands in the front. The only portion of wetlands that they're actually impacting is a little pocket here for their wetland pond, it'd be a wet detention pond. And then they leave nearly four acres of untouched wetlands at the rear of the site. So the majority of the wetlands won't ever be touched.
But there's some type of walk, trail through there?
There is actually a, a trail that leads from J.D. Miller back. There's an elevated boardwalk, and then this particular area here is actually uplands, and that'll be a community park.
Okay. All right. Any questions of the applicant? All right, you have anything else you want to?
This lady in the back.
I'm going to get to.
This lady right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, public comment? Who wants to speak?
I'm Lynn Stafford, and I've been sworn in. And I am the manager of the LLC that owns the lot immediately adjacent to it and south of this lot.
South of there, okay.
All right, and just FYI, we also join, I, my other side joins the state forest. And the Department of Forestry has helped all of these lots in here, uh, by digging a fire ditch. Now, to explain what has happened, when they paved J.D. Miller, they raised it, and it made a holding pond all everywhere. So that, and the, before it was raised, there's a little creek that you can see that goes all the way out to the Chalktahatchee Bay. That's where, that is how, uh, Pat Emhoff and the rest of them walked the whole thing, and that's how the water has always gotten out. That creek was a wet weather creek. You could walk across it most of the time. And now, thanks to the Department of Forestry, the water is going in the creek and back out to Chalktahatchee Bay where it belongs. And I'm here simply to ask you a favor. It is my understanding that the county does, I, I know that you are hap, you're required to have a depart, uh, COE and a DEP permit theoretically, but as I understand it, it's, uh, you know, it's, uh, not required to issue the development order. And my concern is that that needs to be, people need to be aware, whoever's going to issue the development order needs to have that in place, and, and take a good look at it so that it won't impact adversely those property owners who have already kind of resolved the problem. And I'm not saying it will. I'm not against the project by any means. In fact, I'm for it. But I am concerned that those two, that one thing be, be looked at, that those permits be in place, if humanly possible, before the development order's actually addressed.
You've got a-
Uh, before the development begins, excuse me.
Right. Miss Stafford, uh, and looking at staff's, uh, recommended, uh, comments or conditions of approval, uh, they would have to get all these permits prior to construction.
That's what I understand, I, but I've also seen it not happen.
Well, it, I ain't going to say it hasn't, but the thing is-
Well, I just wanted you all to be aware of the work that's been done, and that, that all these property owners have gone together, and they have cooperated to help get everything-
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask the developer right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, could I take just a point of privilege and say to Miss Stafford, it's good to see you?
You too, ma'am.
She was a frequent guest of board meetings many years ago, and not seen her in a long time. So it is a pleasure to have you and good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, Jamie, you want to address those concerns?
No, we, we certainly understand, um, and appreciate the concerns of the owner and developer is actually here. He's more than aware with the permitting requirements. They are actually, have actually applied for both permits. Um, you know, I will say, just, just out of the box, I understand why the concern with that. It does work both ways. If you go and get your, if you go and get your DEP permit or, or core permit before that, and let's say we come before you guys and, and you want to request some changes of the site. I mean, it's been known to happen. You know, there's, it's a catch-22. You know, you can do one first, and then maybe you guys want some changes and, and vice versa. So, uh, you know, I don't, I'm not smart enough to know the answer, but, um, I think that's why ultimately, part of the reason the state eliminated that requirement about half a dozen years ago.
Well, my concern is whatever stormwater that's generated on that property stays on that property.
100%.
Or at least pops off into some creek or whatever to get out there.
100%.
And I want it going over to the neighbors on, whether it's north, south, or the west side.
Completely understood. Um, and that is one of the nice features of the rear of the site. Uh, once we do maintain our stormwater, um, and again, we don't, uh, we do not pop above the 100-year storm event for this site. Um, and then even after that, if we had something catastrophic, we have left that rear five acres undeveloped. So there's additional storage there.
All right, thank you. Uh, is, any other public comment? Just give him the time to rebut. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
You got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, before we move on from there, will your motion also include the staff recommendations for approval?
Yes.
I mean, that's-
That will be included.
Conditions of approval, that'd be included in the, the order. All right.
Yes, sir.
Mac, one more.
Yes, sir. This is our final, uh, proposal for tonight. Uh, the last item on our agenda is the Point Washington Preserve. Uh, this is a request approved by final order. Uh, the project's been reviewed by Bob Barante. It's a major development application submitted by Nautilus Civil Engineers on behalf of Southern Hybrid Homes, LLC. Uh, they're requesting technical approval of Phase One to operate a 693-square-foot multipurpose building, as well as a 5,247-square-foot civic pavilion, and conceptually approved through a phase master plan of Phase Two, Three, and Four on just under 10 acres with the future land use of Town Center One. Uh, project's located at 975 J.D. Miller Road, uh, and identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, this is on the west side of the road, just north of the power substation. Um, and you may recall, this, this development was subject of code enforcement, um, last year, uh, and this is the remedy for that code enforcement action, and this should get them in good shape.
All right, what was the code violation?
Uh, it was for, uh, development without permits.
So, uh, I guess we're supposed to look at it that they just went on air, now they're asking for forgiveness, so to speak? When they should have done this get-go?
Well, I think the applicant may be, may have been operating under the assumption that he had an agricultural exemption, uh, on the parcel, um, and that did go to code enforcement, um, and we have a new understanding, and he's been cooperative and moving forward to get the development order.
All right.
Uh, but the applicant is here to present their case.
You want to report submitted evidence?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So moved. All right, you're up. You know my first question. Better come with a good answer.
Curtis Smith, Nautilus Civil Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Southern Hybrid Homes, Mr. Doug Lyles. Uh, Mr. Lyles approached me, oh, it's probably been four or five months ago, when the code enforcement issue came up, um, explained the situation on that, was that he had an agriculture exemption. He actually had the permitting, building permit paperwork for the exemption for what
He actually had the permitting, building permit paperwork for the exemption for what was actually built, which was more or less a home, and then kind of a pole barn pavilion type thing on the side of it. And as he decided to change the use of the pavilion to allow some public and private events out there, it was seen as a land use change, so that's what kind of spurred all this. And if you have any other questions about the history of it, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Lyles answer that for you. My part really right here, I want to talk, speak to, is that this is a master plan that we had to do mainly because this is Town Center One, which has some very specific requirements on land use, notably that we have to have a mix of uses. And Mr. Lyles has always planned, has intended on doing some multifamily development here to kind of fit in with the workforce housing we're having in the area. And so when I sat down with Mac and Bob Beronte about this, and we discussed the uses that he needed, the intent originally was only to get that building, that one specific use in.
Where's it located in relationship to that?
It is, does this work from here? So on the northwest corner, you'll see a tiny little bit of development up there. There's a very small building and a pavilion. And that is actually already built, that's what's in place now. The impacts were so small, there was no measurable stormwater impact in terms of the overall development. There really is no traffic impact the way that we analyze traffic for civic uses and events like that. So that really, we started going through it with just this plan, and then it came up with, well, this is Town Center, so you've gotta have the mix of uses. So that's when we went to, since he's already planning to do it, let's go ahead, and we modified from a minor DO to a major, paid all the additional fees, came up with a full traffic analysis for the full built-out conditions, and that's what we're asking here today is to approve the master plan. And we'll come for technical review in a development order at a future time. That is planned to be later this year, to actually do the infrastructure of the apartment And on the bottom of the C-200 page here, I think that's in your packet, it spells out each phase of the development. Phase One is what is actually already built, that's the civic space pavilion. And the multipurpose building we're talking about, the reason that's multipurpose is, Mr. Lyles actually has some scientists come in from out of town as part of the Santa Rosa project, and they can be housed out here and actually use that. It also doubles as just some office meeting here for people that are out here in this pavilion, and then they can actually stay there as well, just as an overnight place to stay if they come in from out of town. So that's why it's designated a multipurpose building. If you had any other questions, the technical aspects, like I said, are going to change a little bit. We've had a comment from Sammy Sanchez regarding fire routes and things like that, and that's where we said we'll get into the gritty details of that when we come back for technical review on the next phases.
Heather, can I ask you a question? When I first became on the board, one of the things that we seem to do with regularity that I didn't really care for and still don't is approving conceptual plans. And then it's, well, we're gonna do all this stuff later, and then all of a sudden, the conceptual plan became the plan. Is this the same thing, or is this different from that?
I'm gonna have to defer to Mac or Bob on...
They're asking for technical approval for Phase One and conceptual approval for Phase Two, Three, Four, and Five. Two, Three, Four, and Five will have to come back through the development review process. The application will be sized based on the scope of that individual phase. If it's more than 5,000 square feet, it will come back all the way to this board. If it's less than 5,000 square feet of non-residential, it'll be approved at staff level after technical review committee approval. If it's less than a total of 30 multifamily units, it'll be a minor development approved after technical review committee approval.
Will you tell me why that you think they need conceptual approval?
Well, they're required to have a mixture of at least three uses in Town Center. They don't get all the way to three uses in Phase One. So that's, that is the need for the phase master plan to meet the requirements of the Town Center. They're still gonna be held accountable to complete those phases, to make sure they have a mixture of uses. But at present, we don't have to have full technical approval on all of those phases. They can come back and get those as their plan develops.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further comments from the applicant, or you wanna wait for rebuttal?
No.
Okay, is any public comment? Seeing none, applicant, it's your time for closing, so to speak, if you've got anything else you wanna say.
I'm Doug Lyles. It's L-I-L-E-S, and I have been sworn in. I can answer any questions if anybody has any questions. I think that we've talked about everything, but if anybody's curious, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, you heard my first question. Whenever I ask why you're coming in here basically asking for forgiveness on something that you started, why did you not know that you couldn't do what that is? I mean, I thought you'd done some due diligence there.
Yeah, so we, I started this process four years ago. Was a different planning director then. We do have our USDA farm number, and we started off as a farm, got chickens, we raised quail out there. The, we did, we did get a permit, and we did have it inspected. So, but we got a permit for the cabin out there, which is called an office, it's dual use. The beds are wall beds, so they're desks, or you can pull them out into beds. And so we had all that inspected. And so we built the pole barn because ShellCo quoted $30,000 to run the electric lines back there. There's a 30% federal tax credit for solar, so we could do off-grid, which that's, I don't think that was mentioned. This, this project's completely off-grid, so it's green. We generate all of our own power there. So the pole barn there, and its primary use is to produce energy, so we have electricity out there. It turned out really nice, had a lot of comments, and then the whole, let's use it for events came in after the fact. But we did pull a permit, we did go through the process, and we did have it inspected and passed every inspection. So, but as far as the land use, it's zoned to have a pavilion out there, so it's not a change in land use. But the thing I didn't understand, and really, it's, it's really kind of complicated, 'cause the land development code and the comprehensive plan, to me, they conflict in different areas. But I have to actually build more, more than I was gonna build at this time in order to operate the pavilion, because as Mac mentioned, you have to have three uses. So you, so even though it's, the land use is compatible with what's being used out there, it's not compatible in the sense that I only had two of the three uses, I had to have the third use. So it was really hard for me to wrap my head around that, that I had to build something else or go through a process to have something else I was gonna build in order to operate it. It was my understanding that it would be similar to a house that's rented, say, on 38, that they use for weddings or whatever, and that it would be, the only thing that might come up is that I may have to go to planning to get a certificate of land use, a CLUC. So when I applied for that, they wouldn't accept it even though it's compatible, but I didn't have that third use. So we went through the minor development process and got all the way to the end, and then found out that it had to be a major development 'cause we had to have the third use. And so then we started all over again and made it all the way to this point, went through the technical review and the planning commission. So that's kind of how we got here. You know, I'm an officer of the Builders Association, you'd think that I would know about these kinds of things, but the more I look at the land use and the comp plan, the more confused I get. But I've learned a lot in this process, and I think that we've got everything squared away. We're surrounded by state forests, which makes this a really unique site to have an event, because we don't have to worry about noise ordinance or any of the things that you might have complaints about, traffic, those kinds of things. We've got plenty of space out there.
Let me clarify something. You said you built the barn, pole barn, and then you decide, then all of a sudden, you're having events out there? When you built the barn, did you have in mind holding events out there?
Well, so its primary function was to have, put the solar panels on, but no, I didn't even think about it when I was building it. We, we had that to, to put the solar panels on. But originally, we were gonna use the pine trees that were out there to make a pole barn. But the quality of the trees, even though the diameter was large enough, the quality of the trees was not to where it was gonna be what I would consider to be a good project. So then we end up getting a, an engineer project. It was still pine, but glue-lam, and it turned out nice. So, so yeah, after the fact, we, we did that, and we had the kickoff party for the parade of homes out there. So Commissioner Anderson's been out there and seen it. We didn't talk about this.
This was before we knew.
Right, we, yeah, we...
Coming to QJ.
No, well, yeah, we, we didn't talk about that. We've submitted an application for the Trump funds. We got our acceptance letter for the getting past the first phase today, as a matter of fact, and that's what, that's what we were talking about, is, is training out there.
Doug, I think what, what the Commissioners are concerned about is, and I know this precedent has been set in the past, but what, what they feel like is that you built the barn when you shouldn't have built it. And that's what they're concerned with. I know you're getting in compliance if we pass this today, but explain to me, the solar panels, was that approved in your first, when you first got the approval for the little building?
Well, we got our energy form, and at that point, we were working with ShellCo and didn't have all of our prices in. But when we got the $30,000 price tag, that changed things quite a bit.
Well, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the price tags, and I'll, I know you went and got a permit to build a little house, but you also, from my understanding, is that you got a permit to do the solar panels also. Is that correct, Mac? Is that correct or not?
I'm not sure about that.
I, I know when you and I talked about it before, I thought you said that that was part of the deal, that they were gonna... I may have misunderstood you. I'm just asking you a question.
I believe that was the intended power source for the, the single-family dwelling permit that we did issue, as Mr. Lyles has suggested. I think there was some confusion interpreting state law and the agricultural exemption. There's some new language in the last couple of years related to events at farms and the preemption of any local government permitting requirements there. The, I think the confusion came into being when there's a part of the law that says you can't construct a building for an event purpose on a farm and claim the exemption. If you've already got the building, you can use it for an event purpose without permitting. But you can't construct one for the event venue that doesn't already exist as part of the farm operation.
And Mr. Lyles, where are all your, your solar panels?
They're on the pavilion, the pole barn.
Okay. Mac, one more question. Do you think this was just kind of an innocent misunderstanding?
I'd like to think so. That law is confusing. It's, it appears to be in conflict with our local regulations, and it's relatively new, so I can see how there might have been some confusion on that. This is a beautiful venue. It's in a great location to have events such as weddings or other large gatherings. As Mr. Lyles suggested, it is surrounded on three sides by state forest. It's a unique location with regard to an event venue in our county, where we don't have residential like backed right up against it like we might have south of 98, where we have tremendous event pressure. But this project, it's a good project, it's, it corrects the code violations, and it puts this, this site in good shape as far as compliance with our comprehensive plan and land development code and the Town Center master plan.
Anything else, Mr. Doug?
No, sir.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just a question back. Are there any fines associated with the code violations?
I don't believe there are any fines assessed by the code board at this present time. We will need to conclude the code case, and this is...
I just wanted to make sure that if there was, that we were aware of it.
Well, yeah, and the staff report indicates the conditions for approval, and that also, one of them was any fines to be paid prior to the, the DO being issued or the permit.
The signed permit's in already, sir.
Sir?
The signed permit is in already, so if you would choose to approve this, then we would move very quickly on the signed permit, and both would be issued at the same time.
Okay.
This is the order from the code board, or it appears to be Mr. Lyles' copy. It doesn't indicate that fines are accruing at present time.
They are or are not?
It does not indicate.
Are not, okay. Okay. What's board's wishes?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Two nays.
Two-two. It's, that at present time.
Yes, ma'am. Two-two vote, per hour.
I think the, I think y'all's, the policy of the county is if it's a two-two, I believe that does constitute a denial.
Yeah, the policy is, but considering the first court case, whether that was, excuse me, we need to...
That particular court case, the issue was, it was the way the vote was cast by, there was a vote to deny.
Yeah.
And so that's why the conundrum in that case, this was a vote to approve, two votes to approve, and then the noes are to deny. And I do believe that constitutes a denial, though, under the county policy.
But our policy is, there's one motion that's not even paid, and that is...
No, no, that would, that just...
Okay. All right. Right now, it's denied. Any further business? Stand adjourned.